Good morning, everyone. Happy Valentine's Day to everybody out there. We are going to call to order the February 14th, 2023 School Board of Manatee County Regular Meeting. I'm going to give the next two items over to Ms. Foreman for the District Vision and invocation.
Thank you. Yes, the district's vision is the school district of Manatee County will be an exemplary, student-focused school system that develops lifelong learners to be globally competitive. And then for the invocation, I have invited Reverend James T. Golden, who we all know very well, to do the invocation. He was a school board member for four years and he is a Reverend at the Mount Zion African Methodist Episcopal Church. And while he was on the board, he led when we became Certified Master Board. And he also was instrumental in guiding us to reinstituting the invocations, which we are about to do. I will also say that he's Cracker Barrel's Customer of the Year for four years running.
Okay, question.
So Reverend Golden, please.
And if everyone will stay in for the invocation as well, thank you.
Good morning. If you would allow me to watch the invocation, I would like to have a moment of silence for the latest victims of gun violence in Michigan at Michigan State University. And then we will have our invocation. God omnipotent, God omniscient, oh God, our help in ages past, our hope for years to come, our shelter from the stormy blast, and our eternal home. Once more and again, by your grace and mercy, a few of your handmade vessels have been allowed to assemble in this edifice with the purpose of upbuilding and uplifting public education in Manatee County. We ask your presence now, that you would be on their tongues in humility, the hearing in their ears with compassion, the ruminations of their minds with wisdom, but most of all, fill their hearts with love. Love of you, love of each other, love of your people. We pray that our deliberations, our discussions, and our decisions this day, made by those whom we have elected and made by those whose service they give, that what will come from this place will be more unity, more community. And we pray this, recognizing and realizing that you are too wise to make a mistake, you're too merciful to be unjust, and you're too loving to be unkind. God of our weary years, God of our silent tears, thou who hast brought us thus far along the way, keep us forever in the path of righteousness, grace, peace, mercy, forever. And those who would agree said, amen.
Thank you, Reverend Golden. Could you join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, that moves us to action item number five. No board action required for year-to-date financial statements being posted for the district and charter schools in the SIR report. Moving to item number six, approval of the agenda.
Actually, I wasn't quick enough. Raise my hand on number five real quick.
Oh, yep.
So on the item number five, year-to-date financial statements through 2022. Mr. Wagner, I saw on there that there, or maybe Ms. Saunders, either one, there was about the healthcare fund, that there was expenses exceeded expenditures. So are we still, are we confident, though, that that's all going to be working itself through eventually? I mean.
Right. We're monitoring it through this month to make sure that it's on track. If not, we will have an executive meeting to discuss that.
Okay. I just want to make sure. I'm sure you were. I just wanted to bring it up. When I see expenditures exceed revenue, especially in that healthcare fund, since we're self-funded, I just want to make sure that we keep an eye on it. Thank you. Thank you very much. Yep. That's it. Yeah, thank you.
Item number six, approval of the agenda. The chair has found good cause to amend the agenda to include all items listed under Agenda Amendments on the February 14th, 2023 Agenda, updated on February 10th, 2023, and posted to the district website, manateeschools.net.
A second.
We have movement and a second. Any discussion? Don't see any. Go ahead and cast your vote when it's up on the screen.
You have to hit your motion button.
There it goes.
The original, the mover was Ms. Frank.
Myself.
Second was Ms. Foreman, right?
No.
No, I seconded it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Messenger. All right. Now cast your votes. That is approved unanimously. Thank you very much. Item number seven, approval of minutes. Superintendent, recommendation.
Yes, I recommend the approval of the minutes from school board meeting January 24th, 2023. School Board exempt shade meeting and workshop, January 27th, 2023.
So moved. Second.
We have a movement. We have a second. Any discussion? And go ahead and cast your votes now, and that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Brings us up to number eight, recognitions. It is Black History Month, and so we want to recognize a major contributor in this district and also read our proclamation. So, Mr. Barber, it is on you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, board members, and Superintendent Saunders. We really have a special recognition this morning. I know you will really enjoy it. As you said, it's Black History Month. We take the month of February to honor and celebrate the contributions that Black Americans have made to the history and culture of our country, state, and nation and world. And this year, we are very proud to remember the extraordinary life of Louise R. Johnson and the historical impact that she had on education here in Manatee County. So here to introduce us to those who are here this morning representing Ms. Johnson is the district's Associate Director of Strategic Planning, Omar Edwards.
Good morning. Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Saunders. Our presentation will include this morning three wonderful young students that we have that's going to participate today. Two of them are grandchildren of Louise R. Johnson. So how exciting is that? We have Kenneth Goff III. He's an eighth grader. Raise your hand. All right. We have Kena Goff, fourth grader. Raise your hand. All right. And then we have Daryl Goff. All right, let's give them a round of applause. At this time, we have a brief presentation, and then we'll introduce the rest of the family members.
Good morning. My name is Kenneth Goff. I'm an eighth grader at Louise Rogers K-8 Middle School.
Good morning. My name is Daryl Goff. I'm a student at Louise Rogers Johnson, and I'm currently in eighth grade.
Good morning. My name is Kenneth Goff. I am in the fourth grade, and I go to Louise Rogers Johnson K-8.
Thank you for inviting us this morning to talk about our great-grandmother, Louise Rogers Johnson. It's an honor to be here. Ms. Louise Elizabeth Rogers Johnson was born on October 25th, 1910, and born into Florida to G.D. Rogers and Minnie Lee Rogers. Ms. Johnson was the eldest of nine children. Growing up, African-Americans had little to no education outlets. Her parents, G.D. and Minnie Lee, were determined to make sure their children were afforded all opportunities, even while living in an era of suppression. Ms. Johnson's parents bought the old Manatee County Courthouse and established Lincoln Academy Grammar School, which is the first school for Blacks in Manatee County.
At the young age of 14, Ms. Johnson finished grammar school, which only went up to the eighth grade. After the completion of the eighth grade, parents had to send their children to secondary school. Sending them to secondary school was not free. In most instances, parents didn't have the money to do so. In 1926, G.D. and Minnie Lee sent Louise to Bethune-Cookman College in Daytona, Florida. During those times, many Black colleges had high school departments for children coming from places like Manatee County. Ms. Johnson lived with Dr. Mary McLeod Bethune, founder of Bethune-Cookman College. She also worked in her office. They're the two built a relationship, as Ms. Johnson regarded her as her mentor. Ms. Johnson graduated from Bethune-Cookman College in 1932. Ms. Johnson was accepted into law school at Northwestern University. However, she contracted pneumonia and moved back to Florida. She made the decision to pursue education at Florida AMU University where she graduated. These pictures represent Bethune-Cookman College at that time.
After receiving her degree from Florida and AMU University, Mrs. Johnson started her journey of teaching. She taught for 36 years in Manatee County and six years in Dixie County, where she also operated her father's funeral home, Shamrock Funeral Home. While in Dixie County, Mrs. Johnson taught the eighth grade. In Manatee County, she taught English, P.E., and kindergarten.
Some of her many accomplishments were, accomplishments was that she was the first African-American to serve on the Manatee County School Board, appointed by Governor Reuben Askew. In 1975, Ms. Johnson was named one of Florida's Most Outstanding Women by the Governor Commission on the Status of Women. In 1987, Ms. Johnson became the first African-American to be awarded Manatee County Distinguished Citizen Award. As community service, she held Manatee Youth River Ranch. She established the first Black forage club. She's the founder of Community Faith and Action's tutoring program, advocating and garnering support, advocated and garnered supporters to vote for breakfast in schools. She was a local and state president for National Association for Colored Women's Club Inc.
The accomplishments and services that Ms. Johnson offered her community while she was here were endless. The love she had for her students and her community is still impacting lives today. In 1994, one year after the passing of Ms. Johnson, her family received the honor of having a middle school named after her. In 2019, the middle school was converted to a K-8, which was renamed Louise Rogers Johnson K-8 School of International Studies. Ms. Johnson's contributions to her community are vast and to numerous names. However, what I am sure you have gathered from this presentation is that she was this amazing, selfless individual.
There are so many things that we can say about our great-great-grandmother. We could literally have about 900 slides added to this presentation if time was on our side. We were privileged enough to have tons of family members who were able to give us a true history lesson. Our grandmother was truly phenomenal. The amount of knowledge we have gained during this presentation will last forever. The only regret we have is not having the wonderful opportunity to share space and time with our great-grandmother. Although she is not here with us physically, her spirit soars, her spirit soars throughout this county. Her love for humanity, education, and her community are all attributes that we wish, that we aspire to have. We are proud to be from such an influential family and be the grandchildren of Louise Elizabeth Rogers Johnson.
Now we, now we will leave you with her dearest quote taken from Robert Frost poem, "Stopping by the woods on a snowy evening. The woods are lovely, dark and deep, but I have promises to keep and miles to go before I sleep, and miles to go before I sleep." Thank you for your time.
I think that deserves another round of applause. And I just want to say to you, if you would have asked me in middle school to come up and stand for a group of people, there's no way I could have done that. So I commend you. Another round of applause. At this time, we want to introduce the principal and assistant principal, Louise R. Johnson, Middle School of International Studies, Tony Lasada, and Adrian Boss, if you'll stand at this time. And Adrian is our Assistant Principal of the Year, so she needs an extra applause. At this time, I'm going to introduce the family members that are present here today. And when I announce your name, if you'll kind of stand at that time, if you're able, or wave a hand and let us know who you are. Jonita McNeil, she's the daughter of Louise R. Johnson. Lincoln McNeil's son. Michelle Crockett. Kenneth Goff. Kendi Goff. Kiara Goff. Kay Murray. Keonte Josie. And any other family members, will you stand at this time and be recognized? Daryl Goff?
Grandmother, Daryl Goff.
Daryl Goff, awesome. Another round of applause.
Now, we're going to, a school board member, Richard Tatum, is going to read the Black History Month proclamation.
Proclamation, Black History Month 2023. Whereas the month of February is set aside each year to honor, celebrate, and remember the vital and significant contributions that Black Americans have made to American history and to the richness of American culture. And whereas, in the words of Black English Professor Shelby Steele, "Since 1965 to our time, American society has made one of the most incredible moral evolutions in all of human history to ensure freedom, opportunity, and equal rights for Black Americans. And whereas, Black Americans have made important and vibrant contributions to the history and to the culture of the state of Florida and of Manatee County. And whereas, Black educators have played a prominent role in the history of education in Manatee County, serving in every capacity from bus driver to teacher to principal to superintendent to school board chair. And whereas, we are dedicated to teaching and commemorating the vital and significant contributions of Black Americans to American history and to the richness of American culture. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the School Board of Manatee County that the month of February 2023 shall be known, designated, and set aside as Black History Month in Manatee District Schools, adopted with a quorum present and voting this 14th day of February 2023."
Go over there and accept the proclamation. That's for you to take back to your school, okay? Thank you. You guys did a great job.
Thank you all very much. Yeah, excellent job.
And thank you, family.
Not easy to do.
Is Mr. Goff, one of the Goffs?
We'll give them just a moment.
The one at the house?
No, the one from the door. Oh, okay, Reg. Reggie. Reggie.
So many Goffs. They got me out of this bunch of ones.
Thank you, Omar. All right. We have one other recognition to go through. Let me put on my glasses here so I don't get this wrong. It could be dangerous to get this wrong, but no. We are very proud to recognize the special accomplishment made by school board member Mary Foreman. She, the Florida School Boards Association, has recognized her as a certified board member. Now, just to give you an idea of, you know, the importance of that, they say the FSBA says that 20% of Florida school board members have actually reached that designation. And what it entails is training, that is 96 hours of training in different curricular areas, including 10 hours of school finance, seven hours of policy governance, four hours of bargaining, 24 hours advocacy, 26 hours of leadership, and 25 hours of general knowledge. And Ms. Foreman has completed that all, so I'd like to invite her and the superintendent down so that she can receive her plaque for being certified.
We go, Ms. Foreman.
Thank you.
So proud of you. What a great accomplishment for our district.
Thanks.
Speech, no speech?
Ugly mug in the back.
Okay, thank you. Can you get a picture without me in the back there?
Yes.
Okay, good. I want to make sure I slid over fast enough.
Okay.
You don't need, you don't need my ugly mug. Ugly mug. Congratulations, Ms. Foreman. All right, that moves us to item number nine, public comments. Up to 30 minutes, we'll fit as many people as we possibly can within these 30 minutes. And then if we don't have enough time within the first 30 minutes, we will fit you in and the second portion of public comment. So my first public commenter I have down here is Jeremy Todd Anderson, followed by Jennifer Lynn Wayman. And just so you know, up on the screen will have your time, just so, and I think above you, above me as well.
All right. Good morning. My name is Jeremy Anderson. What I'm going to be reading today are some public comments on behalf of Jennifer Hubbard. She is a fellow Palmosola parent. She's got two kids there. I've got one. Her husband is also a fifth-grade teacher there. So here are her comments. "I attended the SAC meeting at Palmosola Elementary, and Superintendent Saunders stated that, stated some things that didn't necessarily line up with the timeline that we were given and caused some concern that the parents were having regarding the future of the school." She stated that it all started due to the Department of Recommendations, Department of Education's recommendation that the school be rebuilt, rebuilt being the key word here. And that this report came back and was shared in November 2022. Prior to winter break, everyone was fine with the idea that a rebuild would be coming in the next few years. She also guaranteed that Palmosola will be open with students for the next school year, 2023-24. This contradicts what was told to a few select individuals directly from a board member in which they were told that the school would be permanently closed at the end of this school year. The rumors began after winter break in January, when those statements were shared, and it was learned that those parents and administrators who were given your information also acted on it and were able to school choice their kids to a different school for next year, lending weight to the authenticity of the rumor. I understand that the board will not have any official discussions about Palmosola until the February 27th workshop, or February 17th workshop, and that nothing has been decided yet about the school's future. But parents deserve to at least know if where they plan to send their child next year will even still be an option. We understand that this is not a back-and-forth forum, but wanted to get on the record prior to the workshop on Friday. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Wayman, followed by Deanna Brinkley.
Hi, Jennifer Wayman. I want to read some passages from this book. It's a high school book. It's in seven of our high schools. There's a form that goes home with the parents for consent to read the book. As we all know, while I've had my kids through high school, they're not going to bring the consent form. They'll probably just sign it themselves. Here's two passages. There are no slang words in it.
Just stop, stop your time real quick for me, please, because I know where this is going to go. I just want to make sure that we, in our policies, we have no vulgar language, etc., just, just.
There's a vulgar language.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
It's, it's about a girl who's going upstairs who thinks she's going to kiss a boy, and there are multiple boys hidden in her room, and this is just a snippet of that. Okay?
Go ahead.
All right. "Her last solid memory is pain, then black. Then her brain shuts off. Her body is torn apart by violent water. She's nowhere. She is nothing. She disappears. She comes in and out of it. She's hoping it's over, a stillness. A heavy blanket of flesh unmoving. She lets herself hope it's over, then movement. His voice, 'Did you lock the door?' Another voice, 'Yeah, no one's coming.' Another voice, 'Are you ready? Are you going to be a blank?' Another voice, 'She knows this voice. Everybody knows Eric Jordan's voice. It's my turn.' A rhyme for children, one, two, three, how many can there be? She thought, 'I'm going to die, rocking, thrashing a violent sea.' Then more, so much more, more than could possibly be imagined. A voice, 'Turn on the lights, man. I want to see her.' A hand on her mouth, shoving her voice back inside. She sees nothing. She is dying. She is dead. She is in a whale carcass that is being torn apart by eels at the bottom." She is in a whale carcass that is being torn apart by eels at the bottom of the sea. A voice, she's puking, a voice, "Just turn her over." Sometimes the only thing worse than death is surviving. Her hair is caked with puke. She hurts all over. She hurts inside. The floor is littered with crumpled clothes and half a dozen condoms. How vile this tiny sliver of gratitude, then only destroyed. They did not plant anything live inside her. She hears a voice in the darkness giving her a new name. It is slut. The boy of Prescott High School describing all the women in his inventory of lays. I would like to note that this list only includes the full conquests. If I included every, I'll say BJ, and it, um, Hand J, I'd be here for days. So without further ado, here's an analysis of all my hookups. Late 30s, MLF, regular routine at my work. She comes to buy wine daily. Early 20s, community college student, picked her up, got her drunk, passed out on my bed. Mid 20s, hippie chick, 17-year-old slut, the trailer trash that was good, 19-year-old skinny lazy stoner loved to blank all night. 18-year-old blonde, 17 to 18 years old, 17-year-old chubby girl, and it goes on and on. So the story is about a girl who goes upstairs thinking she's just going to kiss a boy and gets gang raped. It's very disturbing for high school kids to be reading this kind of, smut, I guess I would call it.
Can you put the book title up again one more time? Thank you.
And it's in seven high schools at the moment.
Um, Ms. Brinkley, and then followed by that is Paula, is it Lones? Lonest, sorry. I think I gotta write the first time.
Uh, comments have been made that they're experts and professionals and that they shouldn't be questioned. They've gone through extensive training. We should treat people equally, freedom of speech, parental rights, don't fringe on others. Some parents just don't know how to parent. When did the role of the schools change over to being the parents? If this is the case, why are the schools not aligning with the parents? Parents don't want the schools teaching their kids how to have sex, what sex toys to use, which sexual positions feel good, which gender do you want to have sex with today? So if the parents don't want this, but the schools say it's okay, there is something gravely wrong here. We see this clearly with the books that are being found in the schools, but even more disturbing is the fight to keep them in the schools. I gave a book, What is a Woman?, to Chad and Mary to read. I'm not sure if you read the book or if it became a table ornament, but I highly doubt that you would want anybody walking into your house seeing that subject matter out for display. There are only two biological genders, period. This is what we teach as science. Anything else is fantasy land, and that should take part outside of the schools. We do not teach children in school that they become a rabbit or have sexual encounters with a rabbit. This would be fantasy. So why would we allow books in our libraries to insinuate, under the freedom of speech, parental rights, or do not fringe on others, that the experts and professionals tell us there are only two genders? What is the role of the schools? It's to educate, reading, writing, math, and science, then branching out into specific subjects as the student gets older. I ask you today to understand what is the role of the schools. It is not to teach them about love affairs and activism. This precisely is what these books are teaching. It is not about freedom of speech. Children do not know instinctively these concepts that they are being taught. Fighting to keep these books in the schools is admitting to teaching concepts of racism, oppression, guilt and shame, white supremacy, gender-affirming, etc. These stories do not teach merit, excellence of thinking, color bindless, and equality. In fact, it teaches the opposite. So who are these experts that are being entrusted to allow this in our schools and use the Constitution and parent, parents protecting laws against children and parents? Why would there be anything other than inspiring, uplifting, and empowering literature for children? This should be the focus. Thank you.
Thank you. Followed by Ms. Lonest is Michelle Martin.
I have a handout. Do I bring it to?
Give it to Mr. Diefer.
Okay. First, um, I'd like to thank Jennifer for reading that because I actually have information there on that same book, and I did not have the courage to read that. But it is in one of your photocopies, and this wasn't planned. I didn't know she was reading that, but there was actually the list of the high schools that that book is currently in. It's very disturbing. Um, and that was the second page of this two or three-page, very graphic description of what happened to that young woman. Another copy there is from a book called, um, This Book is Gay. And this book, when you go onto Amazon, what it tells you is, uh, there's a long-running joke that after coming out, um, a person should receive a membership card and instruction manual. This is that instruction manual. You're welcome. Inside, you'll find all the answers that you ever wanted to ask, stereotypes, coming out, where to meet people like you, the ins and outs of gay sex, stereotypes, how to flirt, and so much more. The interesting thing is it also talks about, not to mention hilarious illustrations. I can't even imagine what kind of illustrations would be in this book, and I really don't wanna know. Now, last year, this book was actually in several of our schools. And at the last meeting, Richard, you had mentioned about weeds, right, plucking out the weeds. That book is still in one of our middle schools. Why does Mona Jane Middle School have, still have a book like this after our supposed purge of a lot of this information? And to be clear, if this was a book about straight people and becoming straight and this kind of graphic detail, I would still be opposed to it because the detail is very graphic. These children, middle school, we're talking about 10, 12, 12-year-olds with this kind of information. We don't allow these kids to bring ibuprofen into a school. But we can, we can present this information to them, and I found it comical, Chad, that you said, hey, we don't have any vulgarity here. You know, this is, this is a room with adults in it, but we can certainly have it in all of our schools. And I just find that absolutely preposterous. Uh, the third packet I have there is, if you go into Destiny and type in some different subjects, I just typed in transgender, there are still 84 books that are available. I didn't print them all out. I just gave you a couple of examples. So it's very easy to go in and see. The interesting thing, though, is I typed in queer, and it said there's no subjects, there's no titles by this. But if I type in queer and title, many books come up on that. So then I started thinking, well, who is categorizing these? If, are they trying to subvert the system by changing that, well, you can't find it by subject, but you can only find it by title now? So that's very disconcerting, and like you said, pulling out the weeds. As a, as a Florida gardener, we all know how terrible these weeds are. So I know last year, it was more of the, the spring cleaning of getting a lot of it out, but we still have a lot of weeding to do. Thank you very much.
I don't see Michelle in the audience. No? Um, Alexandra Smith? Followed by Robert Cosentino? Anyone catch the time? I think we're good.
He started at 10:22.
Okay, I didn't set my timer. Thank you. You're the bomb. Thanks.
Um, good morning. My name is, uh, Alex Smith, and my child attends Tillman Elementary. Thank you for letting me speak this morning. Um, I come here today to express my concern and discontent with the culling of school and classroom library materials. My statement has been adapted from the American Library Association's Freedom to Read Statement, which I have provided the board, um, some copies of over there. The freedom to read is essential to our democracy. The freedom to read is guaranteed by the Constitution. It is under attack. Our schools are working to remove or limit access to reading materials, to censor content, to label controversial views, to distribute lists of objectional books or authors, and to purge libraries, especially works by or about queer BIPOC people. These actions apparently rise from a view that our national tradition of free expression is no longer valid, that censorship and suppression are needed to counter threats to childhood development. I wish to assert the public interest in the preservation of our children's freedom to read. I believe that these pressures toward conformity present a danger to our children's potential. I believe that educators have a profound responsibility to validate that freedom to read by making it possible for students to choose freely from a variety of offerings. By banning or limiting access to certain books, many think they are protecting children from shocking content. But isn't life itself shocking? Parents and educators have a responsibility to prepare our children to meet the diversity of experiences in life to which they will be exposed, as we have a responsibility to help them learn to think critically for themselves. These are important life skills, not to be ignored or put off by preventing them from reading works for which a stranger thinks they are not yet prepared. In these matters, values differ, but values cannot be legislated, nor can any screening process be devised that will suit the demands of one group without limiting the freedom of others. Americans do not need others to do their thinking for them. As a parent, I do not need another parent's concern dictating what my child can read. In America, no group of people has the right to impose its own concept of politics or morality upon others. It is the responsibility of educators to give full meaning to the freedom to read by providing books that enrich the quality and diversity of thought. The freedom to read is of little consequence when my child cannot obtain matter fit for his curiosity. I realize that what I'm saying may result in a child's access to ideas and content that are repugnant to some people. I do not say these things in the comfortable belief that what children read is unimportant. I believe that what children read is deeply important. I know that ideas can seem dangerous, but the suppression of ideas is fatal to a democratic society and hinders a child's growth. Freedom itself is a dangerous way of life, but it is ours, and we must have the courage to stand up to suppression and censorship in all forms. We owe it to our children. I owe it to my children. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Cosentino?
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Superintendent, um, I am here in regards of, uh, Palmosola. There's a lot of hearsay about the closing of the school, and it looks like from all the yard signs and local business signs, uh, it must be true. So closing PSE in many people's eyes would be a big mistake. Sorry, I'm not a very good speaker. Uh, the school is full of tradition and generation and generation who attended Palmosola. Teachers, parents, families, they all moved to Palmosola neighborhood to be able to attend work at the school. My two daughters attended PSE and loved every minute of it. They made friends then and they're friends now, fellow alumni and Panthers forever. Palmosola is full of parent-teacher involvement nonstop. Proof of that, year after year, Children's Day parade that they attend and participate against other elementary schools. Palmosola has always well over 100 to 150 students and parents attend compared to 30 or so by other schools, and that proves that the love for their school. If you're talking about closing the school because of its age, that don't make any sense. Manatee High was founded in 1897. We don't hear anybody talking about closing that school because of its age. So please give Palmosola the remodel or rebuild it deserves. The students, the teachers, and the community deserve it. Every other school has been remodeled or rebuilt over the years. Now it's Palmosola's turn. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the first, uh, or concludes all of general public comment. They didn't sign up. I'm sorry. I've got the names that I just, that I just listed. So I, I, was there anybody else who signed up maybe after? I don't. Oh, so, so when you write to the email address, that is your public comment to us. That's not you signing up for public comment. I'm sorry. Um, yeah, I'm sorry. That's, that's not, it's not, when you wrote, I do see the email that came through for public comment. So when you write that public comment email, that's your, it's almost like you're standing at the public, the podium. You're just giving it to us. You didn't actually sign up. So I'm sorry. Um, and if you, if you need help with signing up, please let us know. We'll, we'll definitely get you where you need to be. But we all did get your public comment email. I will, I will, um, I know we all got that email, so. Brings us to, and anybody, and, uh, board members commenting on public comment, I'd like to save it just for our last part, if you've got things you wanna bring up, public comment-wise and address. I'd like for that to be done just at the end during our, our comments, um, so we can just kinda keep the flow of the meeting. Consent items, item number 10, consent items, Superintendent Saunders?
Yes, I recommend the approval of the consent agenda for February 14th, 2023.
Summit.
I'll second.
We got a, uh, movement and a second. Any, there's no discussion, please put your vote in for the consent items now. It passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Brings us to item number 11. Uh, public comments for specific business items. I've got two of those. I've got, uh, on the same item, uh, Deanna Brinkley on item 13.3, library media materials. So coming up, Deanna, and followed after Deanna is Jennifer, uh, Wayman on the same topic. This is, this is public comment on the business item of library materials. We're already two, new business. Yeah.
Okay. When we found the books in the schools and the content was discovered, we asked the million-dollar question, how did they get into the schools? The reply was always, we don't know, and the people who purchased them most likely don't work at the district any longer. We did not go to the media. We did not demand investigations. We just asked for them to be removed. Then we were told we had to wait for the new state media training and guidelines. We now have this training, but I don't feel we're any closer. It is time to come out of the shadows of the state and write this course. Can the district define what is acceptable? I know I can. So I wanna know, where is the line for the appropriate literature that is about sexual excitement, same-sex encounters, graphic descriptions of rape and incest, gender-affirming care, child trafficking, sex slavery, political activism, oppression, anti-cops, 'cause this is what is in the schools? We are to entrust that the media specialists have been trained in some new way to know what is acceptable. So what is the training that they have been received over and beyond what the state just mandated, and where can we find this training? When we talk about the whole of the book, do we mean the overall theme? I would suggest yes. So can you define what themes are appropriate? Themes about graphic love affairs and the same gender, graphic stories of transitioning with hormone blockers, keeping it secret from parents. Can you show what the value is of these themes? What is parental consent? How will this be verified? Will signatures be available for public observation online? I suggest yes. In the draft, it says, "The question material will be placed with parent consent requirement during the period of assessment." So the books that air on the side of pornography, gender-affirming, hormone blockers are still available while under consideration? This is changed. In the area where the books contested are listed, I would like to see all documentation attached to each book, the reconsideration form, the documents from the media specialist, any committees or school board's reason for their final determination. I would also like to see a record cap every time a book is checked out. Will books being purchased by the media specialist also be listed online? It is suggested that the person contesting a book must read the whole book, not just take information and the word from other school districts. To this point, every book purchased should be read fully by the media specialist before purchasing. There should also be a form attached to each book being purchased as to the reason, the sources, the background research that was done to determine the purchasing of this book by the media specialist. Um, I also have questions about how, uh, the books are going to be vetted through Destiny. That's a whole nother subject, but we're not gonna have time for, but I ask you right now to not accept any media policy or reconsideration forms, as there is still much more work to be done for clarification on this. Thank you.
And Ms. Wayman? That concludes the new business item, public comment. Um, we're gonna move to item number 13, new business, non-consent items. First one, approval of the budget amendments for December. Superintendent Saunders?
Yes, I recommend the approval of the budget amendments for December 2022.
Summit.
I'll second.
I'm sorry. Um, we got a movement, we got a second. Yeah, Ms. Sellers, you can come up.
You guys would like to have us highlight a few of them?
Absolutely, please do. That's where I was.
So, um, for the December, there were 484 budget amendments and 1,347 chart strings. Now, out of those to highlight, um,
So you may need to step up just to make, you're in that mic to,
Can you hear me a little bit?
We, I, we, I think we can hear you, but I don't know if the TV's We, I, we, I think we can hear you, but I don't know if the TV's in picture.
So to, um, highlight, uh, some of the chart strings that were affected that were over a million. In the general fund, there was the sale of the land for fourteen point one million. That was offset by, um, uh, forecast of hu- higher utilities for three point five million and, um, terminal pay forecast of one point five million. Um, in the capital fund, um, this was, uh, the change in the chart strings were related to transfers between activity types related to southeast high school science, uh, building projects. And then in the special revenue fund, um, that there were changes based on the S R three grant amendments. Um, that was related to, um, sorry, movement of transportation for one point three million and maintenance needs, um, of one point, um, of one million, um, transfer to health and then also, um, three point five for COVID claims. And then also in the, um, uh, for the health insurance fund, um, in the one chart string, um, similar was the transfer from the S R three grant, uh, for the COVID claims, three point five million. Now also in the functions, um, there was a change of over one million in the general fund. This was, um, related again to the, um, sale of the land and, um, in, uh, instructional, uh, sorry, instructional increases, two million. This was related to like terminal pay that was one point five million and the youth mental health training, two hundred and fifty thousand. Um, and then maintenance of plan and that increased to three point eight million. And we also had the health insurance fund transfers in increase of four point one million. This was from S R three for the COVID claims.
Any questions for Ms. Sellers? Yes, go ahead, Ms. Foreman.
I just wanted to know, um, the three and a half million transferred for the S R claims in the health insurance fund. Are we, does that take care of a hundred percent of what's a- available to move over for S R claims?
With that, and, and we've also projected a little bit more into, um, the next possible, about another six hundred thousand.
Okay, but it's pretty much done. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, quick question?
Yeah.
I, I mentioned it before and we're, we're counting on you guys. With the, um, the healthcare fund, there was a five million dollar more expenditure in December than we brought in in revenue. Is that what was talked about? In the earlier in the, in our agenda today. I guess I'm just bringing up the point is that's almost, I think the annual fund is like around fifty million dollars or something like that. I, I, I know you all are watching it. I would just ask you to maybe can just keep an eye on that really closely.
Oh, that's.
I know we've made some efforts to try and do some things with drug prices and things like that. So. I'm just keeping an eye on it for all of us and making sure that it's on, on our mind. So, but I trust you guys. So in the sense of you, you're competent and we hired you to do a job. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? No? Alright, so we had a motion. Sorry, we get back to that screen. We had a motion. We had a second. Um, no further discussion. Go ahead and cast your vote to approve the budget amendment for December. And it looks like it passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Next new business item, uh, item number two superintendent.
Yes, I recommend the approval of advertising a notice of intent to amend school board policies and setting a public hearing at a board meeting on March twenty eighth, twenty twenty three. Revised policies are one, one, two, one point oh one, thirty one, twenty one point oh one, forty one, twenty one point oh one. One, one, two, two point, oops, no, it's no point. It's just eleven twenty two. Thirty one, twenty two, forty one, twenty two, twenty two, sixty. One, one, two, one point oh one, thirty one, twenty two point oh one, forty one, twenty two point oh one. Thirteen sixty two, thirty three, sixty two, forty three, sixty two, fifty five, seventeen. Thirty one, twenty point oh four, eighty one hundred, ninety eight hundred, eighty four oh seven, ninety one, forty two.
So moved.
We've got to move, we got a, any second?
I'll second.
And, um, with that, I know we've looked at these before at our last workshop. Oh, these are new ones coming up.
These are different.
Gotcha. So does anyone want Mr. Um, Chapman to come up and explain some of these?
We're going to, it's part of Friday's workshop. The, uh, explanation and discussion, is that correct? So that would be the appropriate time to, because I do have questions, but.
Yeah, right now is just to.
It's just to advertise. It's just to advertise.
I just didn't know if anybody wanted him to say anything now or not. Go ahead.
I, I had hit my request to speak, but, um, I, I just wanted to know when, because I knew it was supposed to be discussed at the last workshop and then that didn't work out. So I just wanted to know what was the official date. So we're going to discuss on this Friday? Okay, then I'm, I'm fully in fine with this because we're just going to advertise it and we'll have that conversation. And if there's things that we need to discuss or change or amend, well, we can do it on Friday. So I, I'm okay with that.
Okay. I don't see anybody else lit up to speak. So, um, let's go and vote for the approval of the advertising of those school board policies that we will begin speaking or talking about Friday at the workshop. And that passes unanimously. Thank you. Uh, item number three in our new business, superintendent Saunders.
Yes, I recommend the approval of the school district of Manatee County Library Media Materials reconsideration procedure with no financial impact.
So moved.
I'll second.
Got a second so we can discuss it.
Yes, we can discuss it. Okay, so we got a movement. We got a second now discussion. Um, I don't have anybody lit up to speak yet. Yes, I do. Mr. Tatum, followed by Ms. Foreman.
So I, I'm looking through the policy. There is a, where in, under item number four or paragraph number four on the policy, it says responsibilities of the schools, the principal or a designated committee shall. And we talked about this a couple of meetings ago. If we put a committee together and this is a question for Mr. Dyer or Mr. Titlebaum, that has to come under the sh- sunshine. Is that your, your understanding of this or not understanding of this?
Yes, it would.
Okay, so that. But go ahead. Yes, ma'am.
If it's a school committee looking at books and it's not a board committee, it's a working group there, it could be done with their SAC uh, committee that's already there. So I'm not sure that protocol would need to have the same procedure as a board committee. This is a working group of a school to vet books that their SAC committee already is established and doing, which is what we recommended. Uh, they do notice those. They are open to the public. So I think we just need to be clear of what we're thinking the committee is for the procedure versus a board committee. So, which are kind of two different things.
Well, normal SAC meetings now to Mr. Tatum's point, they are not under sunshine.
They're noticed in public if it's using them.
SAC committees are statutory. They are in the sunshine.
I mean, I think what you're, well, I don't want to take anything out of your mouth. Go ahead.
I'm just saying that we, we have to be careful that that complicates the situation a little bit. Uh, if, if these committees are going to meet, they have to be noticed and in the sunshine and follow all the same sunshine procedures that that we're going to do. I was hoping as we reviewed this last time, maybe to not have these committee, committees meet. It is there. I'll have to take that into consideration. I just think it overly complicates. It will throw, uh, it will slow down a process. It's already going to be slow anyway. Because there's only certain people that can review these books and there are hundreds, if not thousands of them to be reviewed. So. That's my comment.
We, we, we have recommended, they can have a working group that's take, that, that is not this official committee, but they take it to their SAC committee, which is noticed. It's on the minutes. Public can't attend. Uh, they, uh, occur basically one a month for the most part throughout the school year. Um, but there's got to be some working group happening of what's submitted and so forth before it gets there. That part is not, you know, a noticed committee per se that's, that's following the sunshine. But we also recommend that when they're purchasing books, uh, that it is ran through the committee. And I think that was part of a public comment. So that it is vetted in that way, that their school community is aware of what they're purchasing uh, before it's also purchased. So we have put that in our procedure of our recommendation as well.
Okay, so that, what I thought I heard you just say was that there is actually a procedure. It's not in this policy apparently, but there'd be a, a procedure given to the SAC committees that, that they will have an opportunity to review books before they're bought. Did I hear you say that?
Well, we are, we are suggesting before the media centers are purchasing books moving forward that of course they're going to have a rubric that they've got to follow before they're buying things. But that they also present it to their SAC committees before it's actually purchased. And then they can vote on that. Yes, we agree, et cetera. So that there is some sort of vetting procedure more than just an individual. Which I think is, that, that's what some of the concerns have been. That just a sole individual are making these purchases, which in the past that, that's kind of been the protocol. So we do have that layer in our procedure that the SAC committee should be voting on those groups of books moving forward.
Okay.
Of any new things coming in.
Okay.
Getting back to your original question of the sunshine law, the, the real difference is with committees, whether they're internal, like the superintendent was discussing within the school. Or is it something where a committee is being formed by the board to report back to the board, make a recommendation? If, if it's, uh, if it's coming back to the board to make a recommendation, I would definitely, uh, follow sunshine law every time. An internal group, whether it's staff or volunteers, if they're, if they're working things out within the school itself and it's not directly reporting back to the board, that, that is probably deemed exempt.
Okay. I, I'm trying not to complicate. So do I hear you say that? If there was a group of people within a school who are meeting to look at these books, that would be an internal group within a school, which makes sense. Every meeting of groups in schools can't be under sunshine, but.
Correct.
As you read this, this, these committees here would not be covered under.
Right.
Sunshine.
Yeah, the key is really if, if they come back and report to the board.
Okay.
That it falls under sunshine.
So the flow, as I see it, is a internal committee in a school makes a recommendation to the SAC which is, and help me if I'm not following it right, to the SAC, which then would be under sunshine. Would be under sunshine. Go ahead, please.
The fact that would report up to the SAC, the SAC would be publicly noticed and that, that would, um, be the recommendation at that point in time for the public as well. So I, I absolutely agree.
Now there wa- there was some previous discussion I seem to remember in workshops where the, oh, I'd like to know, who is, who actually has the authority to make these final decisions? Is it a media specialist who makes a recommendation? Because it seems like we kind of took the media specialist out of here. And was it the principal of the school or is it the board member? I mean, who? In my mind at least, I'm not clear on, because it seems to change a little bit about who's going to be making recommendations and, go ahead, please.
Purchasing of materials in a school, uh, is the principal has the authority of what they're buying.
Okay.
But the media specialist has to certify now per this new, new requirement that what they're doing is in compliance with the law. But the principal is the one that is ultimately responsible for what is being purchased or, uh, within the building, whether it's a classroom library or the media library.
Okay, and he or she would be responsible for being sure that those books are in compliance with state law.
Right, right.
And then apparently there is an appeal process. Uh, let's see, determine, so item number four, sub number four, Roman number four, determine the extent to which the materials meet the Florida DOE criteria for selection to reach a school decision. Decision report will be prepared and sent to the executive director of curriculum within thirty days of the school being notified. The question material will be placed with parent consent requirement during the period of, of assessment. So the committees will get together and then make a, a decision report will be prepared and sent to the executive director of curriculum within thirty days of the school being notified.
That's still the principal.
That's, is that still the principal?
Yes.
Okay, okay. And then responsibilities of the district, the executive director of curriculum or designated shall work with the schools to communicate any and all information required to make a school based decision, communicate the school decision to all school principals and community stakeholders. So who, who will make this school decision? That will be the principal of, of the school? Okay? If the reconsideration of a book or a media material is not resolved at the school level, the complaint, complainant will be supplied with the S M D C, S D M C library media. Library and media material reconsideration appeal procedure also found on our website, the appeal forum, all related items will be referred to the school board for review. So what I see happening here, and, and I'm just trying to understand, is that a book is challenged in a school, it goes through this procedure that we have. If for whatever reason, members of the public don't agree with the decision of the, that, well, the principal ultimately, then they can go through another appeal procedure and ultimately the board then will vote on those.
That is correct. That is correct.
Okay. All right, and these committees will meet, so the, the SAC committee will meet once, they meet approximately once a month.
Probably, uh, for the most part, once a month.
Okay, and so they would, and so initially in the procedure, they will, that would be the forum and where these books would be reviewed or put, will they be in a committee first within an internal committee? And then reviewed to a SAC and then a SAC will make a recommendation to the executive director of curriculum? And how does it get to the principal from there then?
Well, the principal has to bring any item to the SAC. So if it's not, if it, if anything that's disputed, uh, the principal's involved a- along the way. And again, a principal can, you know, um, decide to put a, a book in restriction or so forth too with a working group and so forth. Really, you're going to committees when there's any dispute on, on an item or concern of an item. And the reason we want them to communicate it to the executive director of curriculum is also again kind of a- as was stated earlier. If we've got a concern of a book at one school that a school has deemed should be restricted uh, uh, or have any type of, you know, concern attached to it. We want to make sure that information is conveyed to all of our schools. So we're consistent with our protocols in, in the situation being handled.
So I'm just, again, trying to understand the process because I will, I will get questions and I want to know, know that I understand it. So. Uh, there's a book challenge. Let's just say book A is challenged at school X. So there's an internal committee formed at the school and they review the book. That's a non sunshine internal committee. Then they're going to take it to the SAC.
If, if, if that school committee then says, yes, it should be restricted or it should be, uh, parent permission only. Um, it's agreed upon. Everybody agrees. There's no conflict. Uh, that will then be, uh, communicated to our executive director so that everybody's aware of that book being handled in that manner. So we're, we're consistent across the board. Uh, if there is a dispute, the committee makes a decision, but, but there are parties that do not agree with that decision. How it was handled, it could be the decision is the book is fine. We're leaving it on the shelf. And, and there is an individual that does not agree, then they can file a complaint and then it goes before the board. And the board will then make a decision on the outcome of that book.
So there's the internal committee and, and they, they make a, they make a recommendation to the, to the SAC or to the.
To the principal.
To the principal. So.
Principal makes an agenda to the SAC of if I'm purchasing books or if there are books in question that need to be, um, restricted or removed or not.
Okay, what role does, so the principal makes a decision that he's just, he or she is just informing the SAC about what's taking place or do they have?
Right, yes, they're, they're making decision and, and so forth. So, um, yes, so, uh, in, in many cases, decisions could be, uh, handled a- at the school site. They could all come to a consensus with how they're going to handle a book situation at the school site. It will come before the board if there is a dispute. But if they have a book and a book is in question or vetted or whether it stays or it doesn't, that information has to go to the executive director so that we can, remember, we also have to report any books in question uh, that could be removed or restricted to the state as well.
Okay, so the relationship between the principal and the SAC on, on these books, what, can you help me, can you clarify that a little bit?
Yes, uh, they're looking for consensus of that school community of here are the books that we want to buy. Here's the books that we're probably, uh, questioning that we should censor. Because this committee is going to have a recommendation to the principal. censor, because this committee's going to have a recommendation to the principal. They're going to bring it to their school commu- community, which is their SAC committee, and they're going to say, we're going to restrict this book per the recommendation, give the information, and if it's approved, et cetera, that's what the procedure's going to be. That will be then communicated to the district so that if we have any that are restricted, that, that is now being communicated to all of our schools. So that we don't have isolation pockets of, we've got the same book in seven schools, one's already brought it to the attention that we need to possibly have a parent permission only. We want to make sure all the schools have that same information so that we're following suit with how we're moving forward. Now, could another school say, I disagree with that? I, I don't agree with that outcome. We think that book is absolutely fine? Absolutely. But remember, when you have a dispute, it then will come before the board so that the board will make the final ultimate decision.
So the role of the SAC, as I hear it, is more, the principal is advising the SAC of what's going on?
Yes.
And, and they don't, they don't really have any decision-making authority?
Well, the SAC, the SAC could say, we do, we, we don't agree with those findings.
Okay. And then what would happen?
And then, then it comes before the board. Because if the working committee says X, but when it comes before the SAC, they disagree, you now have a dispute on, on that. So then we're going to give it to the board to say, we have differing opinions. Let's let the board decide based on all, all the information on how we should handle that book. The SAC is very involved, and more than that, you know, they have recognition money. If a school receives an approved letter grade, the SAC has to approve how that, those dollars are spent. So really, that SAC does have a working role into overall, you know, decisions of moving forward of, of that school. Not only with books, but with finances, grants, things of that nature. So they really are there to give the voice in the ear of, of that school community, how that school community feels, how they feel about these items. If they think the, the recommendation from the principal is the group map, we feel like the book is fine, the SAC agrees with it, that's what we're going to say. And that's what we're going to communicate to the rest of schools. If another school disagrees, it will then come before the board.
And the media specialist now, I don't see that person in the, what role are they playing in?
Well, the media specialist must certify that the books in the media center and the books in the classroom are compliant with the law. So they're hand in hand with those recommendations to the principal. The principal's the one giving the recommendation to the SAC and so forth, but they're relying on the media center specialist to say, we are in compliance with the law based on this. I've read it, we've gone through it, I feel that it complies with the letter of the law, has input from the working committee and so forth. But the media specialist really is the one that is going to say, yep, we certify that it, it's in compliance.
I've put some thought, because that's going to be the choke point, it seems. I'm just, I'm just talking out loud just for the public's information as well as myself about how to do this in any other way, based on the legal requirements that we have. And we could probably spend another hours and hours talking about it. I just, it's going to take a while. I mean, there are hundreds, if not thousands, of these books that, that are going to have to be reviewed. Am I correct in stating that, or?
It, it is going to be a tedious process because remember, we have in many cases books that have been in classrooms or media centers for 50 years. I, I mean, we do, we have a, a large collection over time. So it, it's going to take a little bit of time. Now, the media centers, you know, we've done a little bit more vetting than the individual classrooms because they've never been cataloged.
Right.
But when we're getting list, we also have a district media specialist. So if many of the collections are the same across the board in many of our schools, we can do mass approvals based on them meeting the criteria. And then we just notice all of that out. But moving forward, when they're purchasing things, they're now also going to have to be looking at those items a little bit more intently with now the definition of the state before collections come in. So it's much easier on that side than it is going through the collections that are already in there. But yes, they are the, the center of making these recommendations and determinations because they have to certify that, yes.
Okay. And then the last question I have is the paragraph four, item six, numer- roman numeral six. The question material will be placed with a parent consent requirement during the period of assessment. That's a change to our previous ideas. Just some discussion about why, why that decision was made and why we went down that road, so to speak.
Well, I think from feedback, but I'll let Dr. Breslin and come up and speak of that. But I believe we did make that modification based on some feedback and from the updates from the state. But I'll let Dr. Breslin discuss that a little bit more.
Good morning.
Good morning.
And so the parent consent while under review, that was something that we started early as the summer. As soon as a book was put forth, forth review, the, there were some questions from community members, is that still on the shelf while it's being reviewed? This review process takes a while. We don't believe it, you know, it should be available until the review is processed. And so we made sure that language was in there. As soon as it gets submitted through that link on our district website, it goes forth to the schools from my office. And then we put it on parent consent while the process is, is being reviewed. And then sometimes, in, in some cases, it stayed on parent consent. Some cases, you know, it was allowed nine through 12 without parent consent. I mean, you've seen those results.
That's all I have.
Just real quick before I go to Ms. Foreman, just something that was brought up when Mr. Tatum was talking. The, I think there's like two, there's two things going on. There's one, the original purchase of books, brand-new purchases of books, which is between the media specialist and the principal. And then there's also these reviews of things that are already in the school system, which is principal, along with probably the media specialist. He's going to have to, he or she's going to have to get help from them and then move forward if he, he or she deems it yes, no. And then the appeal process happens after that. I think the SAC committee comes in a place where here's, we're going to buy new books and they're going to look at them as well and, and do some vetting with them, I guess you could say. But I think, I think this, ultimately this book is too different. It's like buying new ones moving forward and also how do we, how do we fix what's already been in the schools? But, Ms. Foreman?
Yes, and to, and to weigh in on that, because I don't see anything in the reconsideration procedure that says SAC has any involvement in it.
Yes, we, when we're looking at the state and looking at the recommendations, we have conveyed that we really feel that the SAC needs to be involved in knowing what they're doing. So that's what we've communicated.
The state training speaks to involving SAC because it, you know, brings together your school community, your parents, your business partners to, to review any decisions related to the materials. And so that's in the training for the media specialist and, and what we've provided to schools.
So should we add under the responsibilities of the schools, the principal shall inform SAC at the next available meeting of any decisions?
I think that would be good because it's in that DOE training with a recommendation, but we probably can be a little clearer in there and make sure that that step is because, again, they could have a recommendation and that school community may not agree with a recommendation, right? So then you would really need to me, bring that forward. But it really is making them aware, keeping them aware of what's going on, what's in there, and if there was a book in question.
Right, absolutely.
I do agree with Mr. Tatum that it's going to slow the process down. I mean, we, we say that you have to, that the principal's got to handle this within 30 days, but if you don't have a SAC meeting that month-
Right. So SAC, I believe it's nine times a year by statute that they meet, which is monthly during the school year. And so it would be, in, in some cases, the next available SAC meeting. Additionally, during the summer, they don't meet June and July. So there could be some circumstances when we have to wait for that SAC to review.
So it will hold up the process?
It could hold up the process if we're in that situation.
Okay, all right. Okay. So we're really giving the principal an impossible task to-
So, so when we add language to SAC, we could say 30 days or until SAC has-
That's good.
-has met, you know, we can word it in some, some fashion like that.
Okay. My other questions have to do with, well, I will ask this one question about the appeal process. Is there a right for someone in the community, if we, if, if a book has been removed from the library, that can someone in the community appeal to the school board to put it back?
Yes, they could appeal a decision for any reason. It doesn't have to be because it was removed, because it was kept in the center, you know, whatever the decision was. If they weren't happy with the outcome, they would fill out that link to appeal.
That would be the board appeal form-
Yes.
-library materials. Okay, good. My other questions all have to do with transparency and disclosure to the public. Will we have a list of books deemed not acceptable in the school classrooms?
Do we have a book deemed not?
Yeah, it, let's say that, you know, you've gone through the, gone through Destiny, or they've said, yep, it's, it's not in Destiny, set it aside, the library and media specialist says, no, that's not appropriate, okay? That book belongs to the school teacher who bought it, probably. Are we going to, do we have a list of those? Do we have disclosure on those?
So if it, if as we go through this vetting process, we find that it's not suitable, then we would add it, we would add it to a list that we keep so that we don't have to keep reviewing the process over and over. You know, we want consistency, we also want to be efficient. And so, yes, we would provide that to schools. We have our monthly principal meetings, we have monthly media specialist meetings so that teachers know that, don't include this in your personal library.
Okay. Now, the, at the informal level with the principal and the person making the complaint, they want something removed from the media center, the principal says, you're absolutely right, goes and removes the book. Is there any disclosure required with the state? Is there, because nothing's been filed formally. Is there a list of those so that the public can be aware that the book has been removed?
Yeah, so we communicate with the principals. If they have removed something, we ask them to communicate with us. But we're setting up an internal procedure as soon as we have this process approved, you know, today or, or later this spring. We have already prepared a Microsoft forms link for principals anytime they remove something. So it alerts the curriculum department. So we can make sure we look to see where it's located in other schools. We communicate that to the schools. So it follows the same procedure. So that has been happening as they, as principals have been going through. But it, it's something we'll have set up. So we keep an ongoing record. As Mrs. Saunders pointed out, we're required to submit to the state. We submitted something last week on anything that's been removed. And so, yes, if we're reading out material because we feel it violates the new training that has been sent out by the DOE, we need to make sure we have a record of that. If we're reading it because it's old, circulation shows it's not being checked out, that's different. And, and that, that's an ongoing process. We constantly are reading due to age and other factors of materials.
So that our poor public records person is not overwhelmed?
Yes.
Is there a way that we can put these lists, including the books that are under consideration? Could we put those on the website? I know it's not pleasant, but it's far better than being secretive on this, you know? And if somebody objects to it, you know, says, how can you possibly take this book out of the, you know, then they can appeal.
They can, and then that will-
And that way they're informed.
Right. I agree.
I'm getting a dirty-
Dr. Breslin has the list anyway, so we could, it, it, it's not difficult for us to place it on the website.
Right.
I think we need to be very transparent in this whole thing. Thank you.
Good morning.
Nice to see you. Several questions, and again, to the reconsideration procedure. And I'm going down to number four, roman numeral six, again, as Mr. Tatum pointed out, that this material will be placed in parental consent requirement during the assessment. So we have books that have been brought to our attention. I just want to understand this process fully. This book's been brought to our attention. We're placing that book, fill out the form, keep apparent that your child can read this book until it's reviewed by the media specialist, principals, and/or even up to our level. Am I understanding that process to be right? That's our accurate statement?
Yes.
Okay. Because I have a little bit of a problem with that. If it's been deemed, for instance, with the public comment on that title, some of the things that was read and could not be read because of the content of that book, all goes back to the library training that we got from the Florida Department of Education. I went through this thing in detail after we got it through the workshop. And from what that public commenter read, under one of those guidelines, that is, that book is deemed as having sexual content that's not suitable for our schools, yet it's in seven of our high schools with parental consent. That kind of contradicts what the Florida Department of Education is saying and what is legally allowed out there. But we can let our kids read it. But the law is saying, if it has content of that nature, it's okay to have it in our schools.
I think this procedure, if you all approve it, will allow that decision to be placed back in your hands. That book did go through the committee. The committee read the book and made the decision to allow it in nine through 12 with parent consent. If the board objects to that decision, then we have the appeal process and that you all could review the state trading the law, review the book, and make the decision to remove the book.
I guess my problem is the law states, am I correct in saying legal, that if it has sexual content of this nature that could not be read, it should not be allowed in our libraries? Am I correct in assuming that?
Ms. Bray, to respond, and we both have concurred, that if the material would violate statute, it would be prohibited.
However, we are allowing some of those materials in our schools with parental consent. So that's where I have the problem. The law, and then they allowed, and then the parent consent. These books, and I'm not trying to be over aggressive, it just, it's kind of one of those, the law's a law, we need to follow the law. And how, if parents or media specialists want to deem that book to be okay, to me, that's going against the statute. to me, that's going against the statute.
I know, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Bray, the original process that we had before the state guidance came out around Christmas was the procedure that put, the committee made that recommendation. We've since had further guidance from the state, further training with a media specialist. If the board approves the new procedure, any book in question that differs from the recommendation of a school committee or the past committee that we had established will now come before the board to be reevaluated. And then the board will determine if that was the appropriate measure or it was not. So that is the change, which is why we're coming about now. And those are the tweaks that were made with the procedure after we got the updates from the state. So there could be some that were deemed parent restriction or found okay based on thoughts before we got new kind of updates and training from the states. So any of those books, we're going to have a list once this procedure's in place. And they're all coming before the board. And the board can change or make any, the board could say, you know what? We think there doesn't need to be any restriction. Or the board can say, remove it completely. So that will change now, based on this new procedure. The, that book could then be removed if the board so chooses.
Okay. Am I, I guess I'm a little confused. So you're saying these books with this kind of content, the Florida Department of Education said it was okay to have those books with that kind of material in our schools until this whole thing came about? Am I, is that a correct assessment?
I don't know if it's okay or not.
Right.
It's never an issue. It just was never brought up because nobody...
Nobody brought it to light. Nobody brought it to light, right.
And our procedure at that time was, let's pull it, make it parental consent until we review it. Now we're just tweaking that process. So like, we're right in the middle of changing...
I understand.
I don't think we can go back and criticize ourselves and what we did or what we're doing while we're changing because we're tweaking with the tide, whatever legislature's...
Okay, okay. Destiny. Destiny is a list, a catalog, you might say, of all of the books that we have in the system. However, that doesn't mean, because it's in Destiny, that it's been an approved source? Or is it just being cataloged?
So if in Destiny, it has gone through and been purchased by the school, the district over the course of time through a media specialist, as we've always had our media specialist. So that's how it would wind up in our Destiny system.
Okay, so we've had these books, like Ms. Saunders said, collection of fifty years of history. They're all getting cataloged into this Destiny system through time?
Through time, and then slowly weeded out as, you know, books break down, the binding breaks down, circulation reports that it's not being checked out. So those books would be slowly removed and new books purchased.
Okay. I don't see anything in here about, maybe I missed it, teachers purchasing books for their classroom. They have to go through the principal before they're allowed to purchase that book for their specific classroom?
So for classroom libraries, in the past, teachers have been able to bring in books that they've accumulated over the years. I know as a classroom teacher, I had a classroom library myself from books that I had brought in that I knew would be of student interest. So as we're working through our classroom libraries, even those personally owned materials of teachers, yes, they have to follow the guidelines from the DOE. And so that's the process we have that we're cataloging to make sure that, yes, they are within the guidelines.
Okay. Pre-vetted. And any future books will go through this rigorous process of saying this book is okay to be either in a media center or a classroom library?
Yes, ma'am. They have to be vetted by the media specialist and approved it.
Also, in this deck that we were given at the workshop, it says, if there are books that have been deemed by other districts that are not appropriate, are we looking at that? I mean, we have sixty-seven districts. Are we looking at any of the data statewide?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, that's what I would like you to explain, how that process works.
Yes.
If it's, yeah.
So last week, the state opened up a survey link where the districts could put in their information. I don't know yet how we're going to receive the results of that survey from the state. We're very much anticipating those results. Because when you look at the different districts around the state, it's inconclusive. You know, ones that have been up for review, a lot of them say pending review. And so it doesn't, it doesn't give us that concise list. And so the state sent out the survey. They'll compile the results, and I hope we'll release that back to us.
Okay.
And as soon as we have it, we will certainly be sharing it.
Okay, because, you know, some of these books that was brought to our attention today and on these lists that's been submitted, we get the emails. Everyone gets the emails of all of the books. And I was given one that has thousands of books on it. And it's hard to go in and look at every book. Trust me, I've looked at several, and it's just mind boggling that some of this stuff was even in our classes. For now, I think that's all I have. I just, I just think that my, my hope would be that books that are deemed inappropriate or shouldn't be allowed to be checked out until the entire process is complete. I don't think that if there's a book that's under, that's questionable, that that item six should be, should be there. I think it should be, the book should be pulled until the review process is complete. I don't think it should be parental consent because, and the reason I say that, and it's not, you know, freedom of speech and choice and all of that, to me, it's, you have the option, that parent and/or whomever has the option to always get the book in other sources. It's the classroom, it's the teachers and the media that we're responsible for. These students and anyone that comes before us, you know, and the emails we've gotten, don't block the books, don't block the books. We're not blocking the book. The book is readily available to you through public sources, not through necessarily a school sources. We're to educate. And educate is all different meanings to different people. What we have to do is protect the innocence of our kids. And that book that the public commenter spoke about, I've looked at that book a few times, and I didn't even catch some of this stuff. So it's hard. It's real hard to see that these kind of materials have gotten into our schools. And I'm glad we're taking a hard look at this and creating policies to basically clean it up. So I appreciate your hard work. I know you've been very focused on this. And I want you to know that I, as a board member, appreciate all of the work that you've been doing to help us get through this hard, hard step in our district, so.
Thank you.
I think that's all I have, thank you.
Making progress, thank you.
Ms. Smith, you're the next.
I just wanted to make sure that I understood what Mr. Toddabon was saying about the law and this book. Because my understanding of what you were saying is that should a book violate the law, then it violates the law. And if it doesn't, it doesn't. And what your comment was not specific about this particular book, but instead about the law and how a book could or could not violate the law. Am I correct in understanding that?
Ms. Messenger, in response to you, I actually was reading from the deck, which I remembered from the week before. And it said specifically, "All materials in school and classroom libraries or included on a reading list must be free of pornography and materials prohibited under Florida Statute 847.012", which I've read as well. "Suited for students' needs and their ability to comprehend the material presented", this is Dr. Breslin's PowerPoint, "and appropriate for the grade level and age group for which the materials are used and made available." That's exactly, I was reiterating what our executive director of curriculum had previously stated.
Your comment...
Not my words, those are from the state's, that's from the state training.
Perfect.
I just wanted to make clear, your comment was not about any specific book.
Oh, absolutely not.
Your comment was just about the law and how the law interprets the book. And I just wanted to make sure that that was really clear and that there, that I had a good understanding and everyone else has a good understanding of what you were saying there.
I'm going to speak in pluralities here. It was both of us in agreement as well.
Okay. He doesn't, he's not smiling about that. I don't know if he likes you a little bit like that. Okay, a couple other things. You know, I've pointed this out to people that have concerns about parental signature. And I've tried to come up with a thorough list of all the things that we need in order to have parental signature, like a field trip. Or medical care, photo releases, media releases, AP, ACE classes, syllabuses. I'm sure you can come up with an even more comprehensive list of ways that we want parents to give their feedback and give their consent. And we accept all of those other ways when somebody, when a parent signs. We accept those all. Am I correct in understanding that?
Correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure that I'm clear, like, we respect the parent signature in all of those other cases. Okay. I have another question, and this got brought up by a media specialist that I was talking to. When a student is eighteen years old, but the book requires a parent signature, how is that handled?
In the same manner, for any eighteen-year-old, for field trips or permission to leave campus, we still require that parent consent.
That's what they told me as well, but I just, I wanted to make sure that everyone else was aware of that. Even if the student has become eighteen and could walk into any kind of store and get far more different kinds of materials, they still can't get that book in their own school library.
Right, right.
I, I have, I have concerns about, and I know that it's necessary to have these procedures. And just to be clear for the public, what's before us is not procedures about how books get picked. What's before us is not the procedure on how books get approved through our schools. None of that is actually what's before us right now. The only thing before us is the reconsideration procedures. That is the only thing, I mean, I think there's feelings about all those different pieces, but those pieces are not what's in front of us right now. What is in front of us right now are media material reconsideration procedures. Am I correct in that as well? Okay. I want to make sure that's really clear because we're talking about a lot of different pieces, but really, that's not what's in front of us. How the book gets there, how the book gets bottlenecked through, which is a bottleneck, I agree. None of those things, that's not what's before us.
Right.
And one of the things that I really have no desire to see happen is for it to come before us. I know you say, you know, that leaves it in our hands, yes. But I think that a lot of this is incredibly divisive and is meant to be so. And I don't really want to see more division in our schools. I think it hurts the schools. I think it hurts the relationship between schools and the community. I think it hurts the relationships between parents and schools. I think, I think this really, this wedge issue is really hurting our schools even more. Because it's creating this division when we only have four thousandths of one percent of books that we have spent hours talking about. Instead of curriculum, new standards, reading levels, even the new assessments, all the technology that our students need. Instead of all those things, we're spending hours talking about four thousandths of one percent of books. Now, I've talked to principals, quite a lot of principals, because I wanted to hear how this was working for them. Because that's really what matters. Like, it's not us, it's how is it working in our schools? That's what really truly matters to me. And it seems like it's going very well for them. Their media specialists are very well trained. They are reviewing things thoroughly. If there is any question, they bring it to the principal. The principal and the media specialists have a conversation. It doesn't seem like there's been any type of, not that I have heard, and I've talked to quite a few principals. It doesn't sound as if there's been a whole lot of problems between those two parties or with the parents of those schools. In fact, very rarely is, if there's a book in question, is it even coming from the parent? It's really not. It's coming from the school saying, well, you know, I could see how this could be taken this way or that taken that way, or, you know, and I can understand, you know? And they're just being cautious at this point, which is, you know, I guess that's where we're at right now. One final thing I wanted to say. Oh, I had two things. Number one, this procedure that was put before us, we talked about it at a workshop. And I just want to make sure, and I want your affirmation, that this adheres to all of the newest Florida Department of Education's rules that have come before, that come before the districts, that this adheres to all of those rules.
Yes, ma'am.
And it adheres to the new state law.
Yes.
Because that's really our job. Our job is just to make sure that it adheres to all those things as, that's just our job. That's what we have to make sure we do, okay? The other thing I wanted to say is, for Mrs. Foreman's modifications about SAC, I was the mover, I support those changes. I don't know if the second or supports also adding those changes as just, we just accept that as an amendment. I agree with those changes with the SAC. I think that that's appropriate. I know you took notes on it, but those two comments that you made about adding, putting SAC in there, I think that is really important. I think that that will add more transparency. I think it'll add, you know, more involvement from the community and from parents. And I think that that's an important piece as well. So I just want to make sure, like, as the mover, I accept those amendments. Hopefully, the second or will also accept those amendments, which were just the SAC pieces. Those are the only pieces I'm talking about that I approve. Everything else, I, we've discussed this at our workshop, and I support it. And because it adheres to the law, and that is our job is to adhere to the law. And I've expressed that to people, you know, because there's people on both sides. Either way, whatever your opinion is, we're going to follow what our job is to follow the law. That's what we're going to do, that's our job. So I wanted to confirm that that's what this does, is adheres to it. And built upon, you will build upon this with more internal procedures, is what you kind of said before.
Right, absolutely.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I get a couple comments, we got some others that raised their hand too. So I think that some of the public comments were answered. There's going to be a list, we're going to be able to see those lists, school to school, district to district. I think the state will have a list, they come out and they, eventually, who knows when, but they'll say, these books right here are gone. And you're just going to have to go and get them out. And it doesn't matter what anybody says or whatever, they're going to say, these need to be removed, and we remove them. I think that's eventually going to happen. And so I think that in anything, we started this race, and we're trying to get to the finish line before going through the other stages of the race. And I think that we just got to be a little bit patient on that with everything, even with our procedures and how we're changing them from what they were. Because I think we'll get there, and I think we'll get to the right place. It just, this is a monumental task, I think, in certain aspects. I personally think, so one of the, one of the major issues we've all kind of said, and people have always asked, how do these books get here, right? The state addressed that, and they said, well, we know how they're not, we're going to try them not to get there anymore by making the media specialists do this program or material be certified the way we want them to be certified, right? So that we got to trust, so why go through all of this other? If they're being handed, here you are, media specialist, you're the one that knows it. You're the one that knows the material. You give it a, you give it a no, then it's a no. If you give it a yes, it's good, it's a yes. They are the ones who are trained. I'm not trained, teachers aren't trained unless obviously we're asking them, whatever. Principals may not, so to me, the principal's going to go back to the, to the media specialist to say, well, what do you think? And the media specialist says, well, I think that it's probably harmful to minors because it talks about sexual battery. And the principal is probably going to say, okay, I, let's go with what you think. Because they're the ones that has gone through the certification. If someone needs to be resuscitated, and I have never been through CPR and someone is, I'm going to rely on the person with CPR, okay? So, so if that was our concern from the beginning, how do these books get into the schools to begin with? We are correcting that from the jump. So I'm not saying that there may not be some that, well, theoretically, we could say, from now on, purchasing new books, there shouldn't be this problem. from now on, purchasing new books, there shouldn't be this problem. So now there's still those thousands of books, right, that, that may be in the school that, that got there before this process was put in place. So now we got to figure out that process to get them out or keep them in.
Right.
Why would we not use the same process that we're using for all the new books? Meaning, have this, have the media specialist and the principal decide if it's good for their school or not? And that's it? Because that's what they're going to do with the regular books, right? Um, so, so I just don't, I just, I think we're kind of creating, and I know the state wants, wants us to, they want us to create a procedure, they want us to create these things, but the state is also putting together the criteria to pick the books. And the person picking the book went through that, went through that criteria, and now we're going to go back and say, wait a minute, timeout, we don't believe you, you, you know what I mean? Uh, I just think, I just think it's, it's, we're, again, making a mountain out of them all. We're, we're creating stuff that doesn't need to be created. I think the biggest problem is when you look at, at what the F, the, the deal we sent us, you know, the biggest part is, which is harmful to minors? That's the question mark. The question mark not is, hey, does this book create sexual excitement? Does this book have bestiality? Does this book have sexual battery in it? That's not the question. The question is, is it harmful to minors? And I'm not going to be the one that, that allows something out there that is harmful to minors, and it fall back on me. So, and I don't think that, in, in the criteria we're now having with this, the, the, the media specialist going through what they're going through, I'm assuming it's going to be picking out places where these, these, what I just read off are happening in the books, and then they're going to choose, does this, is this harmful or not? I don't, I, I just, I, I just don't see, the book that was read, I mean, and I agree, and she's gone now, but I agree with her, that, that, why would I sit here and say, you can't do that with our policy, but I'm going to let a fo, my fifteen-year-old daughter read that? That doesn't make any sense, right? We're all adults here. Now, there could be kids listening that, that don't have their per consent to listen and that was read, so I could see that. But I just, a- again, I feel, we're, we're, we're we're, we're chasing our tail. Why are we not just, the media specialist is doing the criteria, the media specialist and the principal decide what they're going to do. It's going to come back up to us, and we're going to sit here, like Ms. Messenger just said, we're going to sit here and what are we going to say as board members? We're going to look at this, we're going to look and see who the, who the media specialist, we're going to ask, and when, we're going to ask the, the curriculum specialist, we're going to ask you, we're going to ask the media specialist of the district, what do y'all think? Ah, 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 and then we're going to have to make a decision. And we're not going to make a decision, I would hardly imagine we're going to make a decision to allow a book that was read right there to be in, I just, I don't see that. So why, again, I, I feel like we're just, we're just in a vortex, we're just spinning in a circle. Um, to, to some of the, that, you know, I think that we've also got to remember what books are deemed from curriculum, from the state, approved from the state. To me, if a book is approved by the state, and, and, and this, maybe we put this in here, I mean, I'm not, I don't put words in anybody else's mouth, but if, if, if a book is approved by the Department of Education as curriculum, um, and it, and it's a book that you can read under, underneath their, their curriculum they set, that shouldn't even be brought up. I mean, that's, that's a check, we're not even entertaining that. The school shouldn't, because it's already been approved rigorously by the Florida Department of Education, and then by us, as we deem, here's the curriculum we're going to use for certain things. So I think those books like that, psh, see ya. Catching the rye is in the books for twelfth grade or eleventh grade, curriculum, it's listed, psh, see ya. So I want to make sure that we're not getting books that are like, you know, and I know people have gotten, we've all gotten emails, that, you know, Clifford the big red dog goes to school. Oh, it's not in there, why are we taking it off the shelves? So I just want to make sure that, that, that that is, is possibly in there, and ob- obviously depending on the motioner and the, and the second, if, if they agree to that and everybody else, that if, if it's, if it's deemed yes from the, the Department of Education in our curriculum, there's no debate about that, in my personal opinion. Um,
Chair?
Yes.
The concern I have, which is, I think the same thing you're expressing, is it, is it, with the recommended procedure, it looks like a determined, a single person can create, like a mini-hearing on, on a single book, if they're just persistent and go through this procedure. I'd just hate to see that get abused, because it, it all finally leads back to the board. And you'll have an open debate like this on a single book, and there could be ten thousand other books, or, you know, a hundred.
Right.
So I would hope that through the professionals that you've hired, they could determine it before it gets to the board.
And, and that's a whole nother part of the process, is, okay, it's great to say it comes to the board, and that's fine, listen, I'll, I'll be, I'll put, and I think we all would say, hey, we're elected, we'll, we'll make the final decision, that's fine, but to what degree? I mean, are we going to sit here and have two hundred, three hundred books that we've got to go through and look and say, this is when we have professionals that have gone through the, the training that says yes or no to it as well? So, I mean, I agree with you. Um, with that, we're past our hour and a half, we're about hour and twenty, and so I'm going to do a quick five-minute recess, and then we'll come back.
Stay tuned.
All right, we are going to reconvene from recess on our same topic. And I do want to go back just to one thing I said earlier, the harmful to minors. The next page, it goes on to bring a phrase of what harmful to minors means and their descriptions. And there's three bullet points, and it's got to meet all three of those descriptions and representation of nudity, sexual conduct, or sexual excitement that are harmful to minors. And it talks about those three ways. I haven't seen, and I don't know if, I'm assuming maybe you all have, I haven't seen the media specialists training criteria they have to do. I haven't seen that. But I'm assuming it probably goes even more thorough of these three bullets of here are the three things we deem, when I say we, this is the Florida Department of Education, deems harmful to minors. And if it does, that just goes back to reading to my point, the person who has, who is certified in this and has this and done this, I just don't see how we can possibly sit there and then turn around and say, nope, we don't agree with you. And then, what are they going to do? Every single time, they're going to say anything controversial, they're not going to, they'll just say, pass it up. And so, and then it's just going to be a logjam. And so, those are my thoughts from now. Mr. Tatum, you're back on the board.
Okay.
Then Ms. Foreman.
And myself.
And then Ms. Bray.
I wanted to make a comment about judgment calls. And what we're dealing with here are not math problems, they're going to have to be judgment calls made by human beings. And so, when we look at things like paragraph four, Roman numeral six, I hear Mrs. Spray's concerns that, why would we leave this stuff in the libraries while it's being under consideration? Put some thought into that. And the only, the issue I had, I came up with there was that, I don't want this to be able to be abused by people where you could just throw books, if we made it, for instance, you have to remove the book until it's, there's a final determination on it. People could start throwing books like Clifford the Big Red Dog Goes to School, just for the fun of it, you know, and just start pulling hundreds of books off the shelf because of that. And what comes to mind, actually unfortunately, is kind of what happened at PCHS last week, where, you know, we've made the system anonymous, and someone said, well, I can just start throwing, you know, throwing a monkey wrench into this by, you know, making these false claims, so to speak. So, anyway, I just want to bring up that point on that issue. And then, you know, as far as all these books getting to the board, let's remember too that we are responsible to the public, and if members of the public have a concern with a book, it ultimately has to come to us. And, you know, if that means we have to look at one or two books every board meeting for the next 20 years, I, you know, that's just, it's our responsibility if someone brings it up to us eventually to take a look at it, we're responsible to the public ultimately. The question I had for you, Dr. Roslin, so if there is a, let's say Broward County bans a book down there, decides to take it off the shelves, is there any indication yet whether the state will require, or if it's banned down there, it'll have to be banned in Manatee County, do we have any indications on how that's going to go yet?
I have received none. Mrs. Saunders, Mr. Chapman, have you received any indication that the state?
No, other than they've done this, they started to ask the 67 school districts for a list of their books that they have removed. And so, presumption is, is that we'll get that list, you know, statewide at some point to say, here are books that need to be removed from your schools immediately. You know, for example, the book that was read at Public Comment is, has been on a list that have been distributed around the state by many, you know, people and groups. And so, you would think that probably many other counties have weighed in on that book like we have. So, that may be on that list that the Department of Education may come down on and say, this book needs to be removed, or this book needs to be in this sort of, you know, classification of some sort. But we've received no, every guidance we've seen, we've shared with the board that we've received on this issue, so.
The reason I ask that question is I would actually prefer there not to be like a statewide list, just because I'd like to maintain some local control, just because someone down in Broward County doesn't particularly care for, and it's a judgment call, like I said, we're not doing a math problem. It'll be interesting to see how that pans out, it's certainly above my pay grade, as we used to say in the military, to make that decision. But I would still like us to be able to look at these books locally and make our own decisions. So, I'm just crossing things off here. So, it seems like we have at least two, from a parliamentary procedure, two amendments that we wanted to make to the original motion. And I was reading my, I actually bought myself a little summary of Parliamentary Procedures book, you know, so, do we want to actually talk about, so there's a couple of choices it seems like we have, number one, we could amend the motion right now, we probably ought to come up with some specific wording, and that may take some time here, but, because otherwise, we get the policy back and we go, hey, that's not exactly what we thought we said. Plus, it does appear from my little reading of my Parliamentary Procedures that you should specifically define the language and that we vote on it as a board, it's not just a, here's an idea, you guys go write up something up, because then it's really not.
I was going to, once we went through everybody's questions, discussions, come back to say, yes, let's change that and actually make it an amendment.
Make an amendment, okay.
I still want to do it until everybody, you know.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, I'm trying to.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Stay on parliamentary procedures. And then, there will be, it would be good to have public access on the website to all the books that we, whatever the decision is, so that, because I've had people ask me about it. And let's remember that a public records request, and I confirm this with Mr. Tittlebaum, does not necessarily have to go through our process, you know, if someone writes an email to me and says, I want this information, then, so it'd be easy now to just say, well, here's a link, go to the website, and there it is, rather than, like somebody said, inundating our public records requests to people with this type of information. So, that's all I had, I just, there are the two, I will, Ms. Messenger mentioned me, whatever the two amendments were, whatever you said previously to the break, I remember saying, yes, I'll agree with that. And then, the other amendment about the SAC, I agree with that, that Ms. Saunders had suggested. I'm just suggesting that we give specific wording now that we agree on and vote on that specific wording, because it's a policy, rather than just giving them the general idea and then they write it up ourselves.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Tatum, for purposes of anybody that does make a public records request, it is my strongest recommendation, it is forwarded to the public records department and is responded to by the public records department. Those are, would be deemed official requests that need a formality to it.
Sure.
Even though it might be, hey, here it is, we may be able to tell you, once you send to public records officially, we logged you, we acknowledged you, and we formalized it. If not, it could subject anybody, a board member for a public records lawsuit, saying they didn't comply, and I would never want to see anybody put in that position.
I agree with you there, I'm just saying, if we have a link though, then that would, would that satisfy, could we just say, there's a link to your request, would that?
The public records rule is, anybody from the public, anonymous or otherwise, may request information from any employee, the role of the employees to make sure it goes to the proper department, which would be the public records department, to acknowledge the response and to give a formal response to it. I would, again, not advise of responding to anybody directly. One, we want to make sure we have full compliance, and two, that we have the record of full compliance.
Is there, would there be an illegal problem with putting a link on the website that just has all the status of all the books that have been challenged, what their status is?
I would defer to the experts.
And that's what we're building, Mr. Tatum, we'll have a list of removed books, or, you know, parental consent, if you keep that. And also remember, this is why we're going through the classroom procedures, you know, you will also, as a parent, community member, know what books are in the classroom, as well, in that classroom library as well. So, so that's, hence this procedure. So, you'll know both what books are in the classroom and what books have been removed from the classroom.
And that's very transparent, some people in the community may disagree or agree with whatever decisions were made, but at least the decisions are transparent and they're there, and people can see, and, yes, that's good, thank you.
And then, Mr. Tatum, just to respond, it's very important that, number one, on the procedure, if a complaint is not resolved informally at the school level. So, our goal is to not come here, is to resolve it at the school level between the principal, the media center specialist, and resolve it there. And then inform the SAC, you know, essentially add it to a list, you know, so there's all transparent, we understand. So, as a parent, you then see, wait a minute, you know, I like that that book was removed, or if I don't, then you can start this process. So, our goal is to, is to, that's why that sentence is very important there, so.
Thank you. To follow up on Mr. Tatum, it's not even just, it's good governance that we vote on exactly what the procedures are going to be. So, I would ask or suggest that, because we have a full agenda still yet to go through, but give them time to go out and redraft it, and then bring it into us, and then we can vote on it, you know.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Do we have to make them, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but is this a motion to table?
Yes, it's a motion to table.
I'll second the motion to table, then.
I still have comments, so, go ahead.
Well, if we're tabling it, it's done. I mean, if we're tabling it, we're done with it, and we're going to let them go do what they're.
Until we take it off the table, later.
You don't want to put it on the table yet if we still have comments.
True, okay, all right, oh, okay, yes, yeah. Yes, okay, thank you. As far as the discussion about the board decision, it's my understanding that the law specifically states that the board is responsible. So, I think we have no choice if there's a disagreement for it to come to us. And also want to, you know, to, what you were talking about, about if it's part of the curriculum, there's a difference between instructional material and media material, you know, I mean, the media books that we're, and which this process is discussing are books that are, the student, they're self, I think they call it self-selected, but the student reads it, it's not on the required reading list for the class. So, To Catch Her In Aray may be in there, but it, you know, and it may be on a curriculum, but, but we just, we need to be very aware of that, because I think, from what I'm seeing, some districts are crossing the line, so. Now, as a question about parental consent, just because someone, somewhere, somehow, for some reason has said, this book should be censored, doesn't mean anything, you know, it just means someone has complained about it. The list that we got in our email had To Kill a Mockingbird on it. So, to take it away for the process to finish, isn't fair either, because it's, a complainant does not have, they're not making a decision, or, it has not been determined if it meets state law, okay, or not. So, the fact that we say, okay, this one's under consideration, and it requires parental consent, great, you know. A parent has the right to decide what their child reads, and, so I will, I am so against restricting materials from the parent's approval, you know, on that one. And, I believe that's it, so, thank you.
Just a rebuttal real quick on what I meant by, because I know you're working on some language, possibly, what I meant by curriculum is, let's say like AP curriculum, right? So, I want to make sure that, and I agree with you, the books in libraries obviously can be, are different than the list of what you got for junior English, right? But I want to make sure that, when the curriculum, the books that are underneath that curriculum and are in that reading for that year are deemed fine, To Kill a Mockingbird, right? It's probably under a list, if I had to imagine, in, what, 11th grade English? So, and I'm really too concerned about the AP, the AP curriculum as well. Your parent consents to take that course, so you should, as a parent, know what's going to be presented in that course. So, if you're taking APR history and you see a picture of David, that's, that is what it is, right? And so, there shouldn't be a run to get rid of a book that's got a picture of David, because he's new, right? Because then we got to see, is that harmful to minors, and does it meet those criteria? So, that's what I was kind of meaning, just to make sure, clear on that. Ms. Bray, you're up, and then Ms. Messenger.
Media specialist training, is that done through the Florida Department of Education? That they go online and do a, like a video type?
Yes, so they had the PowerPoint presentation, and there was a voiceover as well they required to watch, and then fell out that they watched it. We did it in a large group on our in-service in January.
Is that something that we could get a link to and see that, as well as board members see that training?
Absolutely, we will make sure that you have it.
I would love to actually go through that, I mean, if it's like the ethics training or whatever, I think it would be good for us to see what, understand, media specialists go through, you know, years of education, I'm guessing, but this specific training is geared for this, am I correct?
Yes, ma'am, and that PowerPoint is the training, but listening to the voiceover view as well?
Right, okay.
And we've both taken it and have our certificates, so.
Right, and I don't mind taking it and getting that certificate as well, because I want to, and I don't need the credit, I just want to take it, okay?
And the law, when it says certified media center specialist, they don't mean certified from the training, and they do mean that, but they really mean a certified media center specialist who has the degrees and the certificates and all of the, all of the education. So, you know, like I kiddily said, and we did, we did take the training, and we have our certificate, but that does not mean we're certified media center specialist, or even certified to review books. Dr. Breslindman, because she's a doctor, but, but, but the, I think you understand my point, but I just wanted to make.
Yeah, yeah, I, yeah, so I would like to get that link if you don't mind. And when I refer to the deck that you have provided, Florida statute 847.012, and all of the languages with that, and I spoke with Mr. Tittlebaum, what's the history of that, and I'm looking at book 67, chapter 53, but it's 2008, from what I see, is probably older than that, but that's just part of what I could see, just looking briefly. So, if we had, and I understand we're probably going to table the language of this process eventually, just so we can get it lined up specifically, so, under that guideline, the materials that was read to us today would deem that book to be pulled from our schools? Would I, is that a correct assessment?
Again, a certified media center specialist would have to, would have to weigh in, weigh in on that. Right now, it's a parental consent, you know, we can, the guidelines are the guidelines, which you just read, that statute, yes, has been around a long time, but a couple of slides before that, in the training, the Department of Education clearly states, there has never been a clear definition of pornography or inappropriate materials in our schools, until now.
Until now.
So, that's why we're in this period, but we're, we've been waiting for this, I don't mean that to be negative, we were waiting for this discussion and hopefully this vote to then, you know, start this process of potentially looking at what we did over the summer, we were one of, if not the first school district, to start reviewing books and start this process, and we had no guidelines on it. So, what you're looking at is the results of what we had come up with as, let's get this going, let's, you know, make sure that parental rights are being heard and we're protecting staff and students. So, we started that process right away in July, right after that law was passed. So, you're seeing the results of that, we're now, you know, now that we have some of this more guidelines, the process can now start on perhaps some of those materials, but that's why there's a parental consent on there, because we wanted to make sure that at the very least, we are protecting students by having, and protecting parents' rights by having that parental consent until we had further guidance from you all.
That's all I had, I just wanted.
Ms. Messenger?
Yes, okay, just in response to the language changes, if we can just, instead of tabling this, just do this, I'd prefer it, I mean, I know that Mr. Chapman was writing stuff, his is going to be a lot prettier than mine, but my thoughts were on item, because my understanding is the discussion of the changes that we thought were appropriate were in section four. And, so, under A, I have two schools of thought, either we make a new letter, one, under that and say, inform the school SAC of the reconsideration, and make that the new number one, period, or we start it with that, we leave the I, the one as it is, and say, inform the school SAC of the reconsideration and review the challenge books or materials. Either one, I think, would achieve the same thing. And then the other one that I recall was for five, and there was some conversation about adding in the SAC notification so that it's done in a timely process, but also fair to the school, and so, I was going, I think we should add at the end of five, or as soon as possible after the required SAC notification. Does Mr. Chapman have anything different or better than that?
I think that's a good place to start.
Was there anything else?
Well, that's SAC, not staff.
I said SAC, I'm sorry. Sometimes apparently I talk very quick.
I don't think it matters what, I think where you have it is, that should probably be number one, is.
Just period one.
SAC, we've got a reconsideration, and there it is.
I mean, the only thing is, then will that hold up the process, because, do they have to notify the SAC and then review the challenge books and materials, or if we put it in there?
Original, so that's my question, the original challenge goes back to number one. If a complaint is not resolved formally, so, this is only if, so if I bring the complaint to the principal, principal says, you're right, I deem this, you know, and they reach out their media specialist, they say, this shouldn't be on the shelf, and yank it. SAC doesn't, I mean, SAC may need to be notified, like, hey, we pulled these books, but they doesn't need a reconsideration happens. I think it only happens if, and correct me if I'm wrong, is if the principal says, no, keep it on the shelf, that same person says, well, now, no, I want a reconsideration, and then it's got to go to SAC. So, if the principal from the jump, and the media specialist principal from the very beginning say, no, this needs to be pulled, I guess you could have a reconsideration to keep it.
So, then, I think, I know there's still a motion to table, so we'd have to vote on that anyway, but I would make a motion to amend, or I can accept it as, if the board is supportive, well, I could make it, in addition to my, I already moved, as long as a secondary would approve it. But, we could make the new number one, inform the school SAC of the reconsideration, period, then everything else would be moved down. Then, on what is currently five would become the new six, it would say, a decision report will be prepared and sent to the executive director of curriculum within 30 days of the school being notified, or as soon as possible after the required SAC notification. Because that was the concern, was how timely that was, am I correct? Is that, was that it?
The other one that I said was just about the curriculum, that a book cannot be brought up reconsideration if it's underneath the curriculum. Like, if it's listed as a book in the curriculum, that you're going to go check out in the library to read for your English two, you shouldn't be able to reconsider that, because it is already approved by the state.
I think that's the understanding of the district as a whole, with lots of other pieces that have to do with curriculum. I, I think that's the understanding of the district as a whole, with lots of other pieces that have to do with curriculum.
That's fine, if we, if we're okay with not putting that piece in there, knowing that, I just don't want to be bogged down, this process be bogged down by a book that's in the curriculum, based on what the state says is the curriculum. Not like that Chad just chose to read this book in his, in his English class.
I understand what you're saying. And, uh, to me, there's a significant difference between curriculum and these library materials that we are talking about right now, because those are.
I agree.
Those are two radically different things that I think there's some misconceptions on what those, they're, they're totally different things.
The board doesn't want to put that in there, that's fine.
Well, I just know how the district treats all other pieces of curriculum, and it is a mandatory thing because it is part of the curriculum. And that's different than what we're talking about here, but I'm fine if you want to add that. I wonder where we would add that. Mr. Chapman, do you have a suggestion?
That would, um, that would be resolved at the informal. The principal is going to say, it's curriculum, it's state law.
Probably, yeah.
You know, so it's not going to, it's not.
But that doesn't mean that that person can't ask for reconsideration just because the principal already squashed it. That's, seeing, that's where I think we're going to get, we could get into where, like Mr. Tatum mentioned, you could just,
Right.
You know, I, I'm, I'm a kid, I don't want, I don't want to read this book in my AP class, so I'm going to yank it, yank it, yank it, yank it.
That's the benefit of coming to the Department of.
Yeah, I think you did. Red badge of courage.
Instruction, is it, number three, it starts with curriculum and instruction, so right there, we could say, ma'am, this is a state-approved material.
Perfect.
It doesn't qualify and, and just.
Okay.
That's fine with that, I got you.
The doctor.
So, those are, I can either make a motion to amend, if you'd prefer, so it's cleaner that way, because then we can vote on the amendment and then vote on the item, or I can say, I'm adding that to my motion. Whichever way you'd prefer, you're the chair.
Um, whichever, whichever is easiest for Ms. Means, do you have a, I mean, whatever's easiest to make sure we get it down your language.
Okay, I'll make, I'll make a motion to amend, um, and the motion to amend will read, um, under item four, um, under A, the new number one will read, inform the school SAC of the reconsideration. Uh, that will move all the items down, so the new number six, which is currently five, will read, a decision report will be prepared and sent to the executive director of curriculum within thirties of the school being notified or as soon as possible after the required SAC notification.
Who, who seconded it?
I second, so I accept the amendment.
Yep.
You'll, you'll second that? Do you have any other wording recommendations? Does that fulfill everything?
Yeah, and, and, you know, this is not set in stone, we can, you can approve it, we can always, if there's something you think, you know, we can come back and, we can edit it again, it's okay.
First time we're doing this, and I think there's going to be hurdles and stuff to go through, so if we feel like, you know, we go for six months and, you know, at the beginning of next year, we feel like, hey, we learned from this, we need to tweak this or that, then great, but I do want to thank you for, for making sure and, and going over number one is, it starts with the, you know, we're hope, hopefully, this is all resolved with the principal from the very beginning.
Yeah, and, uh, and, and, and for people listening, even, and when it says informally, remember that book, whatever the decision is made on that book, let's say it is removed informally, we'll go on that school's website or, you know, list, so that way a parent says, whoa, 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 wait a minute, I didn't want that book removed, I didn't even know this was happening. Then, we have a process to, to, for that parent to then get involved in reconsidering that book, so it works both ways. Uh, and then also, why this is a little, seems a little odd is remember this is a procedure. And, and it's, the boards don't usually approve procedures, but we're doing this because in the new law, which I think was probably an error up there, but it says that a board must adopt this new procedure and not policy. Uh, so that's why this is, seems a little, you know, we're going word for word, because usually I'm handing you some Neola lawyered up policy, but this is why this is, seems a little nuts and bolts.
And I would assume the next step, the next step, well, probably, once the state compiles everything and gets books, the next step, I would imagine, is that you're going to come back to say, look, so we, we have these lists from these books. Do we now just say, this book is under this list? You know what I mean? I mean, and so, I do think this is just a living, breathing procedure, so.
And, and, and the forms could even be modified later as needed, am I correct in saying that as well?
So, we've, we've got a, we've made the amendment, we seconded it. Ms. Means, do you have that up there too, so we can vote on this? Yep, it is approval of the.
We're voting on the amendment.
Amendment.
Language.
To the amendment?
First, and then we're going to vote on the poli, the amended policy.
That's what I was asking, do you want to have, have us, are you going to be able to put this up twice, or do you just want a verbal and then this one for the final?
I, I would disagree. I think you should vote on the amendment.
And then go back and, okay, so let's just do the amendment verbal, so that way you don't have to redo anything, Ms. Means? Okay, so, so, just with a, with a, a nay or yay, um, let's go with the yays first. If you do approve the amendment, say yay, yay. Any opposed? Okay, so amendment's good. Now, we go to what's on the, the screen, which is the actual, um, library and media materials reconsideration procedure.
As amended.
As amended.
That should say that as, yeah, as amended.
Yeah. It'll turn, it'll turn, okay.
Okay.
And that is.
Go ahead and vote now.
Yep, go ahead and vote, yep. And that is approved unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chapman, Dr. Breslin, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, that moves us to new business item number four. Superintendent Saunders?
Yes, I recommend the approval to use the State of Florida contract. Number four, four, zero, 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 dash, N A S P O, dash, nineteen, dash, ACS for copiers and managed print services, S D M C, number twenty-three, dash, oh, oh, nine, seven, dash, K, K D, continue procurement for products and services estimated in the amount of three million, one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
So, moved.
I'll second.
We got a movement, we got a second. Any discussion on this item?
Yeah, I do have a question on this.
Yeah, go ahead.
Am I the only one to put my hand up? Probably. Um, how, uh, do we do this? How often do we recycle? Because this is for the public to understand. Technology changes, so do computers, printers and all of that, so we have to recycle them into new, newer and updated equipment. So, I'm glad you're here. You can explain that to us about, I, and from the paperwork that I looked at, it's Conica?
That's correct.
That we're contracting with?
That's correct.
Okay, and then what they do is bring up the copiers and/or whatever supplies, and then they maintenance? If there's maintenance to be done?
That's correct.
Okay, go ahead, you can.
Sure, so this process actually started back, um, originally in twenty fifteen. In the, the most recent fleet of copiers that the board approved in eighteen nineteen, uh, that lease is up and has expired, um, all but one phase, which will expire in the next twelve months. The proposal that's in front of you today is a new fleet of copiers. Uh, as you well know, copiers, multi-function devices are critical devices. Our schools and departments use them each and every day. Um, this particular proposal, when you look at the five-year lease, uh, is just shy of thirty-five thousand dollars more than the current contract that we have with HP Sharp and Wright. However, it shows a twenty-six percent annual savings and click charges, um, so that's pretty significant. Uh, and with, with the cost of everything going up, uh, across the board in hardware, furniture, um, we feel that we've got a very, um, proactive proposal in front of you that we're recommending Conic Minolta, along with a number of eco-friendly, uh, types of, uh, functions that are provided in those devices. Uh, and, and long-term, to answer your question, how often, uh, at a minimum, five years, this, this would come before the board. But there are some strategic, um, options in the State of Florida NASPO contract that we worked with Director Gruet, Kim Dufon, Brian Collins, who is our print services coordinator, Steve Ryder, Director of Site Support Services, uh, that'll allow us in twenty twenty-eight to actually extend this contract and bring additional savings. Now, obviously, we need to cross that when we get to twenty twenty-eight, but to answer your question, minimum five years. But again, we're very excited about some of the options in the State of Florida contract. So, we're following best practices in procurement, uh, and ensuring that we follow board policies and, and bring a very efficient, cost-effective, uh, contract to the board.
Okay, that was basically summed it all up beautifully, because I'm familiar with some of these processes. Renting all this equipment is basically what we're doing, leasing, and then they service it as well, so that's a good thing. Okay, I, I didn't know how long the contract was and/or how much more it was from the one prior, and you're saying we're going to save.
Yeah, the annual savings of, uh, twenty-six percent, which I think equates out to, close to, Brian, what is it, eighty-eight thousand a year? Uh, based, and what we did is we based that on data from twenty-one, twenty-two. Uh, when we look right now, I think, um, we were at thirty million impressions, and we're actually on pace right now. If our, if our habits through June of twenty-three continue, we're actually, um, our impressions are down about five million. We're projecting across the entire school district, which, in that realm, our savings will actually be more than what we're projecting currently. Uh, but, yeah, you're looking at about eighty-eight thousand or just shy of a half a million dollars over the five-year term of the contract savings of the current contract, and again, with today, with everything going up in cost, to bring you a contract that, uh, we can sit here and say, based on our impressions from twenty-one, twenty-two, which was actually a pretty significant year when you date, when you look at what we printed and, and where we're at with, with COVID and all the different things that were thrown at our school district, uh, to bring you a proposal that ultimately could shut just south of five, half a million dollars is pretty significant.
That's good, that's all I have.
I don't have any other, um, questions posed, so we've got a motion, we've got a second, and let's go ahead and vote on this approval of products and services, and it passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Item number five, Superintendent.
Yes, I recommend the approval to accept and expend a Florida job growth workforce training grant in the amount of four hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars.
So, moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion, any speakers want to speak on this?
Real quick.
Mr. Tatum?
I just wanted to make the point to the public, I don't know when I could do it, but I went to MTC yesterday, had a great tour, and these kind of grants, I think, are useful to get people out into our workforce that are, that we need. So, that's all in common I wanted to make.
It's incredible, MTC's, it's an incredible place.
It's an amazing place, everyone, I mean, I don't, if somebody can get an opportunity to go take a tour, and maybe we could even organize public tours or something like that. I talked to the director down there, just, it really is one of the good news stories in the Manatee County school system, and we're, you know, I, I know I have trouble getting good plumbers and good electricians out there, and they're really working on that problem, so I just wanted to highlight that, that's all, thank you.
Anybody else? All right, um, let's go ahead and cast your vote for that item. It is approved unanimously, thank you very much. Item number six.
Yes, I recommend the approval to apply, accept and expend an amendment to the Unified School Improvement Grant, UNISIG, supplemental teacher and administrative, administrator allocation in the amount of one hundred and forty-two thousand, five hundred dollars.
So, moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion on this item?
I don't want to be the person all the time, but on January tenth at this meet, we had that on an agenda, um, an amount of two hundred and twenty-two thousand, nine seventy-four, and then today we have an amendment. Can you explain that?
Two different grants, we have.
Okay, that's what I wasn't real sure.
One goes to Onico and Manatee, invisible men in regards to instructional. And then the other one is the teacher administrative allocation, so teachers and admin that have state VAM that are effective and highly effective, this is the amendment that we're doing because we forgot to add FICA.
Oh, okay, I, I.
So, I need to be able to make sure that our teachers and admin are paid out, and we have been waiting a few months for the amendment process with the state, so.
Okay, so the first one in January was.
Correct.
For the schools.
For the schools, monies that's at the schools, this is the money that is a supplement for the teacher.
For the teacher.
And admin.
Okay, that was the only question that I had on that one, because I was like, I know we did one of these, and.
We had two UNISIG grants.
Yeah, okay, that's good, thank you so much.
Can I just add?
Yeah.
The more time you sit here, the more time you'll see that, like.
Right.
There'll be something like the rabbit laser when that's coming up, like, I see that every year, right? You get to know, like, oh, I know what that is, that's an engraver, you know, like, the more time you sit, you'll go, oh, that, I know what that is, or I know, you know, like, that's just like a, it's cyclical, you know?
I understand.
And the more time you, you're, you, you, you have the, the honor of being here, you'll go, oh, I've seen that, we've talked about that, you know?
So, we got a motion and a second. Let's go ahead and cast our votes for that approval to apply for the grant, and it passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Um, item number seven, Superintendent.
Yes, I recommend the approval to apply, accept and expend an amendment to the A R P S R three formula grant to L E A's, A R P S R three formula grant to L E A's learning loss in the amount of eighty-eight million, eight hundred and seventy thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars.
So, moved.
I'll second.
Request to speak again.
Um, all right, any, yep, I got one. Ms. Bray?
Again, I went through that information, uh, on the grant, I'm sorry, could you come back?
That's why I'm here.
Yeah, good, good. Um, and this is all to bring back our students into the learning loss. Okay, so, as you can see, I went through about every line of this, I'm sorry, but that's detail-oriented, it was hard to read, I did, it was, okay. So, SOARN four is on here several times throughout this. Uh, my question, I guess, to Superintendent, how long have we had SOARN four program? I'm just curious about. I, I try to find the history.
It, it was, it began since I've been here. I can't recall the exact year, but that was established, uh, probably about eight years when we developed, uh, the Director of Early Learning Position and established SOARN four. Uh, remember, most of that is not paid for out of K-12 spending allocations because it's not funded in our F E F P, pre-K is not. So, most of SOARN four is operated through grants or public donors.
Okay, okay, I kind of, I'm like, for, how long has that program been in place? Um, because I did notice that, and then, um, farther down, um, there's a lot of online, um, curriculum, I'm guessing, and training throughout this, grant money, present SAC premium preparation. I looked at, there's two of those. There's one called, uh, SAC premium preparation and the ACT preparation guide. These are guides, I mean, we're, we're talking a significant amount of money for guides.
And so, those were decreases, so that.
Okay.
To our curriculum department as request, because ACT and SAT, you can get a concordance score to assist kids with graduation, if they don't pass, like, FSA. So, what the curriculum department wanted to have was additional tests so that we could test our kids. But what they decided to do was to change that, like, you see the guides, because you need materials to prep the kids on to do well. So, like, the ACT, like, if you get a twenty-five, I think it is, in the State of Florida, you can get seventy-five percent bright futures.
Right.
So, it's just additional resources, materials, so how the grant operated is that collaboration between all of our departments of what they needed, and then if that's something they don't need anymore, or if we have to make sure that the function object lines are cleaned up, that's when we do the amendment process.
Okay, right, I understand why we're meant to, but I'm just curious that how many students actually use these programs? Quite often, I'm hoping, if we're getting them, I hope they're accessing it.
We, we purchase that for every senior and, and predominantly our juniors. That specifically, if they did not pass the tenth grade reading requirement for graduation, that we encourage them, and in an intensive class, we are prepping them, not only can they get their concordance. Not only can they get their concordance score with the SAT or ACT to graduate, but it also gives them admission into college if they choose.
Okay, so this is just additional tools if they're kind of lagging, is what I understand from reading and materials. Okay, one line I'm a little curious about. And I understand this is an amendment, but on here, there, I don't know how it can go in there, but it's a travel for two administrators to attend the National Association Federations of Program Administrators, a huge acronym. Training for a three-day training is slated for March of twenty-twenty-three in Washington, DC. And this amount reflects airfare per diem and hotel cost. And then there was a registration fee. The, the air, the hotel and per diem is eight thousand. And then the registration fee for this training is two thousand. I guess my question, who is the two administrators going to this?
Well, they'll be selected from either our, um, Director of Finance or Director of Budget to be able to participate. I go to NAFIPA with our Title I grant because that is where you get trained in all of our federal grants. So every single outlook of the grant, dealing with the budget, dealing with the finance, dealing with our green book, like, at the federal level, we use a green book and our red book at the state level, understanding any type of new legislation that is hitting us, that we have our consortium of our, um, attorneys that are there, that are presenting information. That's where we go get trained to know what we're supposed to do and the accountability pieces. So since that department has not been on that end, and we have all of these federal grants that we are learning to manage more so, like, we're okay with Title I, Title IV, any of our entitlement grants. But because ESER has been so large, and then understanding, like, now we're in that monitoring phase, and with that monitoring phase, what that looks like and what we should have in place, it's just cleaning up all of our procedures so that we can be fiscally sound. So yes, so they added in, so I don't know right offhand the amount for the registration. You have to pay for airfare, the hotel accommodations. And it is that last week, I think it's like three, four days in the last week of March.
And.
So I recommended that they attend with me so that we, as an entity for the school district, can become better.
Have you been to this training before?
I have been, I have not been to the NAFIPA. I want, I go to our state one, and I usually go to our ESEA one. So I've only been in my job for two years. So this will be my first year going to NAFIPA. But I, I've had the training with our attorneys.
Okay, because that stood out. I'm like, okay, this goes, I would think.
Travel is a lot, like, even when our, like, we have principals that go to our national Title I conference. Like, conferences cost, but it's a part of what's embedded to make sure that we're doing what's proper.
Right, okay, because that was, that one, like, oh, wait, I don't remember ever seeing that before. And then I have other questions I can get with Superintendent on pie, more, cart, cart, and then a lot of mentoring, uh, stuff in here. I know we got a lot of money. We need a mentor, we need to teach basics, catch up kids that are behind. And, you know, other than that, I just want to make sure that the money we get, after all this is over, you know, that we're not graduating five years from now, kids that are so far behind and used the, uh, the excuse of COVID. They were so far behind, we couldn't get them caught up. I think with all this money, we hopefully can get everybody up to speed and use these funds correctly. So that was all the questions I had on that. I just wanted to bring that up. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Any other questions? Thank you. We've got a motion, we've got a second. Uh, let's go ahead and cast our votes for the approval of that grant. And passes unanimously. Thank you very much. I think we're on number eight. Superintendent?
Yes, I recommend the approval of Soul Source to purchase rabbit laser equipment, SDMC number twenty-three dash oh oh nine nine dash BS, estimated in the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars.
I moved.
I'll second that, but I do want to speak as well without.
Somebody beat me, so I'll hit the second button.
Nope, too late. I just hit it.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. And did you say you had a question?
Yeah, it's real simple. And again, these are on here, and this is our time to talk about this stuff. And I'm real familiar with laser equipment, engraving. I mean, there's equipment out there that cut metal that's inches thick, you know, laser equipment. So I did look up the website of this company, and they're out of Milton, Ohio, I think they are. Is this the first one we bought from them? Um, it's a Soul Source, from what I understood? Is that my, am I right? Soul Source? Have we bought other equipment from them?
So we have. So a couple of things that you had raised. So cuts through aluminum and metal, so we do have plasma cutters.
That's the word I couldn't find. Thank you.
We use those in our engineering and welding programs here in, in Manatee County. Uh, pretty much every engineering program has a laser engraver. Uh, and they've been very successful for, really for the last twenty-plus years here in Manatee County. So we use a number of different vendors. Uh, this one has a specific, uh, laser engraver, which is, uh, water-cooled. It has a special, uh, system in it. But, uh, schools can still purchase other lasers if they choose. Uh, they don't have to go with this company. But we have a lot of these lasers in Manatee County, so, uh, they've been, uh, operating very successfully. The, the teachers who use them and the students who use them know how to use them. And if they change schools or move from middle school to high school, a lot of times it's nice to have the same equipment in since they already know how to utilize it. So, uh, we're very happy with this particular company, and they do a good job. And the cost is, is, uh, very competitive for us also, so we can stretch our dollars uh, to purchase as, as many of these as we need, so.
As many as we need because looking online, the type and size varies from the cost to what model that you purchase. So this is basically the seventy-five thousand is to, could be two lasers, three lasers?
It could be a couple. So it depends on the program. It raises, ranges from like forty, sixty, eighty watts, and that's how strong the laser is that it's doing the engraving or the cutting. It's called rastering or vectoring. And, uh, so it just depends. No, not one laser would be seventy-five thousand dollars. It could be a multitude. They range between six thousand and eleven or twelve thousand dollars. So it just depends, and a lot of it's limited by when you do the tour of MTC. I want you to see the advanced manufacturing program. Seriously, the laser is this big.
Yeah.
It is giant. And you cannot put this in a middle school when you have a limited space. So it's gonna depend on the application and the school that you have, based on which model you're picking.
Okay, all right, that's all.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, don't see anybody else raise, so let's go ahead and vote on that approval of the rabbit laser. That passes unanimously. Thank you very much. And last, number nine, Superintendent?
Yes, I recommend the approval of the use of the inter-local purchasing agreement tips, number two-one-zero-one-oh-one, Technology Solutions Products and Services, SDMC number twenty-three dash oh-one-oh-one dash BS, estimated in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars annually.
I moved.
I'll second.
And got a motion, got a second. Any discussion, Ms. Bray?
Yes, pulling the data on that, I'm just curious at why there's such an increase. In twenty-eight year, twenty-twenty-one, it was eight thousand, eight fifty, uh, five seventy-eight rounding. In twenty-twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty-two, it was forty-nine, forty-eight thousand. And twenty-twenty-three this year, to date, year-to-date, is forty-seven thousand. And now we're seeing it's gonna be a hundred thousand. Why such a huge increase from the, I mean, that's just two years?
Uh, th- this company, we're utilizing a lot of this for our VEX robotics. And the great thing is, today we have a huge VEX robotics, uh, competition occurring at the convention center.
Go in there.
So, uh, when you're done, uh, i- if you have time, if time permits, I do encourage you to go. All of our schools are, the majority of them are participating. And what you will see is this is generated because of the increased participation and the increased need of the schools. So we started small. Mr. Wagner and team, uh, brought in, in, in this product and these competitions. And, uh, Mr. Gadsmer is over there right now running it. But we started small, and then like anything, you hope that it's gonna catch on, and there's gonna be a desire to improve and increase, and that's what you're seeing. We may not spend a hundred thousand.
Right.
But we are anticipating that it's gonna grow even more, and we're gonna have more people and more, uh, you know, competition with that. Now, in some schools, instead of having just one team, they have multiple teams. So we're able to get more and more students to participate. So this really is in line with what's going on today at the convention center.
This is good shit. This is good stuff. And that's, you know, when you bring up things, everybody thinks, oh, it's bad, 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 but it's not. A friend of mine, this short story, said to watch BattleBots. Is anybody familiar with BattleBots? It's enormous. It's worldwide competition. And that's where this could lead our students up to, competing at a national level. And VEX robotic, I think, is part of that real junior league. There's actually junior leagues. Pee-wee, I think there's even kids that do remote cars, and they're in this big arena. But I think this is great, and that's what I was hoping to hear, that more interest is why we have to spend more money. And I think long-term, it shows students at the early age, all the way up to college and into the engineering field, what you can do with a remote control. That's all that comes out.
Remote control and the power that that has with it. So I think this is a good thing, and I, I think it's great.
All righty, and, um, nobody else set up to speak, so let's go ahead and vote on the approval of item number thirteen point nine. And it passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Uh, moving on to new business, no superintendent recommendation. Number one, approval of revisions of the Citizens Financial Oversight Committee Charter.
Yeah.
Forget who brought this up originally.
Ms. Forman.
In a, in a workshop, but it looks like it's been, been redone, um, and redlined and made those changes. So, yeah, we're just waiting on.
A motion?
Yeah, a motion. We start discussion?
I motion, I make a motion to approve.
Okay.
A second.
Okay, now, up for discussion, um, I've got, um, actually, I'm sorry, Ms. Forman was first, and then Mr. Tatum, and then Ms. Messenger.
This was not presented at the last Citizen Financial Oversight Committee meeting. And it's their charter, and, um, they are volunteers, they're professionals. So I would prefer that we not vote on this today, that we wait until their, their next meeting so that they, the entire committee has a chance to discuss it, um, and weigh in on it. I think their input is valuable, and their next meeting is in April. I don't see any reason, I don't see any, we're not in a hurry, so, uh, so I would move that we postpone it, so.
I'll second that.
Okay, we can still have the discussion on the item. So, um, Mr. Tatum, you were next.
So does that mean that we were basically want, what you're suggesting, Ms. Forman, is to let the citizens, the CFOC members provide input on the, on the revisions to the policy?
Yes, exactly. We've always allowed, we've always invited the committees. It's not allowed. We've invited the committees to comment on proposed changes. And sometimes it makes a difference, you know?
Okay. I do want to make, I'll make the comment just about the policy to the public that some people have expressed some concern that the, uh, the proposed change where the, where it says, "Manatee Education Association and the president of the local chapter, the American Federation of State and County Unischool Workers Who Represent Employees of the School Board and Collective Bargaining Shall Be Non-Voting Ex officio Standing Members of the Committee." And the comment was made that they're really not approving the expenditure of anything. They're just approving past expenditures of things that have been done. And I understand why that might be a concern, but there's still, it could be the, what I call the appearance of impropriety, where people who vote on expenditures for their organization, whether it's past or future or present, still have influence over that. And to me, that even though they're not necessarily, they might be trustworthy people, there's the appearance of impropriety. And I think that this, the wording of the proposed policy is, is good. I, I don't have an objection. If they, they might have some other concerns, something to bring up, I'm willing to hear it again. It's not like the world is gonna stop turning if we, uh, let them weigh in on it, so.
So I would ask Ms. Bray at the next meeting to make sure that that's discussed.
And Ms. Bray, you're up for.
Right, well, Ms. Forman is the one that brought this to us, uh, saying that the public brought it to her attention. And we write this charter that, I don't think the committee wrote it, did they, initially?
They had input.
Yeah, they approved it.
They approved it. Okay, but we had the final approval of it, I'm guessing. I'm, I support these amendments. I think that optically, and I've had debate on both sides about this, either email or phone conversations or just in the public. And I think that having them as an advisory, having people there as advisory is good uh, because they can provide historical data. However, voting on, having a voting voice, I don't think is a good thing. I declined being on a committee, uh, with a county because I thought it would be a conflict of interest, both for me and optically, to be on a committee because I advocated for that particular funding source. So I declined being on those committees so I would have the opportunity to go say, hey, I would like to have money for this particular, um, sector of the community. So I support the modifications, and that's the way I would leave that. And again, as Mr. Tatum said, this isn't, it's something we can go back and change, but I think this should be the way it should be. I, and I've been on that committee, and I can see how, um, things can be viewed, uh, both as being a member of the committee and a citizen prior to being on the committee. So I, I, I will support this. I'm gonna vote to support this and not take it to the committee. And I will discuss this. I will take it back to the committee at the next meeting and tell them this is my analogy, and I'm sure they're all watching. I know Ms. Barber's here. But I think that they could be the advisory side of it and not necessarily voting. And I understand because I think, and ultimately, this charter can, is, needs to be revised to be more forward-looking instead of looking backwards at things. And, and I had, uh, directed the committee to start doing quarterly reports to us instead of waiting, instead of doing a whole annual report. And that's a vote. That was a vote that was put on the table. So I think that I support these changes.
Ms., um, Messenger was first.
I have concerns about something that I just heard. What I heard.
What I heard you say is that you directed the committee.
I suggested to the committee.
Okay. None of us have individual power. None of us can direct someone. Our power only comes when we act as a board. When the board votes, that is the action. Because none of us have a power outside of that. We can't go and say, you go do this, you go do that. We, we don't have that power individually. We can't do that. That's, that's statutorily not our job. That's not how this board operates legally. And it is set in, in statute how we operate. We cannot individually direct. If the board were to vote and say, we would like quarterly reports, then that's something as a liaison, you can say, the board has voted, and they would like quarterly reports. Just as if the board discussed this revision, as a liaison, you say, the board has discussed this revision because they may not watch our meeting. And that's the nice thing about the liaison. The liaison isn't to run the Citizens Financial Oversight Committee meetings. That's not the job. The, that, they have a chair for that. That, it's the link to make sure that the will of this board is adhered to and that there's clear communication between that committee and this board. For instance, if that committee said to you, hey, I don't think this is the right thing in the charter, you would bring that to us. You wouldn't make the decision there. You'd bring it to us. We'd have a discussion, just as Mrs. Foreman has done for the, that, this committee in the past. Because she was liaison. So I have concerns about that now that that's been said. That really concerns me because that's not, that's not how this job works. I know there are perceptions by people that this is how this job works. And I'm not saying that's even your perception. I recognize that there are perceptions. People believe once you're sitting here, you can do things and you can, but that's not. You have to work as a board, work as a team, which is why I've always valued us as a team. So I have, I have some, some concerns about that. I, I don't feel comfortable with any board member making suggestions to a committee without the board saying, that's what we want. Because they, they shouldn't act on that.
Yep, okay. If I may interrupt.
No, I am not done right now. I don't. To get back to this item before us. Y'all know how I felt about this. I'm not going to debate it again. What Mr. Tatum just said about how they aren't weighing in on how the money gets spent, they're not. They're just looking to make sure it did get spent, how the board said. You reiterated what I said at the last time, so I'm not going to talk about that. I will say that I had committee members that did reach out to me that were upset that this didn't get brought up at the last meeting. They weren't made aware of it until after the meeting and then contacted me. And they were like, can you please make sure we can at least discuss it? And so I really appreciate you bringing that up because that's really valid. That even when we were having the discussion during the workshop, I was so like, not happy with this amendment that I didn't even like take that into consideration. Like, no, we, they deserve to give that feedback because we do that and everything else. Every other time we've ever had some sort of revision, we always ask, hey, what's your feedback? Because we value them and we want them to know that they are our committee and we want to hear what they have to say. Doesn't mean we have to agree with it. I'm trying to think of a time where we didn't. I'm not sure I have one right now. But I would like to hear what they have to say, and I know that they will thoroughly discuss it. And I think it warrants that. I think that that's deserved. I now have concerns about what they were directed to do and how to make it clear that that's not what the board has supported unless the board takes an action today in order to support that. I would like to make sure it's clear to that committee that that's not what we asked for. I have, they are volunteers and the charter and the, I, I think even the referendum language makes it clear that it's an annual report. I think the referendum says that. So to, to deviate from what we promised the voters, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, I did not expect that today. That is not the issue before us, but I'd like to make sure that we make it clear that that was not a board direction. I do not want to deviate from what our charter said and from what the referendum language said to the voters. So however, we need to make that clear. Maybe we need advice from the attorney to ensure that we make that clear to that committee, that that was not the direction from this board. Aside from that, I support Mrs. Foreman's motion. I think we should postpone this. We can set a date certain if we'd like. I don't know if we really need to because it'll be a few months from now at this point, but I do support that. I would like to hear their, their observations, their support. And I'll be honest with you, if they say, they support it, even though I don't love it, I will support it. Because I think if they are saying it, then it's got my blessing. I won't even be a no if they support it. How about that? But I'd like to hear from them. So I think that's valid, so I wanted to thank you for that.
Um, I'll say, oh, I'm sorry, were you done?
Oh, I'm done.
Um, I know you had, you had your hand up too. I will say that I agree with Ms. Foreman, and I will support that motion as well when we're ready to vote on it, that I would like to hear what the committee has to say. They're there, they're the ones in it, they're the ones doing it. So I'd like to hear what their thoughts are on it. Doesn't mean I'm going to agree with them or not. I do, I do, after seeing this, after, at the workshop, I was just kind of like, yeah, you know, but at the end of the day, this committee only does one thing and it, and it's double checks us if we're spending the money right. And that's all it was, and that's all it was chartered to do. The, the reality is, is we, as a school board, are the ones who are supposed to see how we're spending that and if we're doing that in the right way as we speak to the superintendent on the programs that we are installing with the extra mileage. So the, the committee was never put together to say if the money being spent is being spent and then we're, we're seeing results. It, they were only there to make sure that we weren't taking the money and spending it on X, Y, Z when we told the public we're spending it on A, B, C. So, um, because the reality is, and I mean, I don't want to, I mean, they aren't an elected official to, to run the district, this, the C five. So I don't, I don't really have a problem with the two, the two heads of the, the, the unions being able to vote that. Because again, it's on us to make sure, are we using this money correctly? And, and I do want to hear, I do want to hear what they think though. If the committee feels like this is an issue, and there's people on there that are uncomfortable with this and how it runs and how it functions because they feel like those two positions, I do, I would like to hear from them. So I definitely support, I, I think that's, that's smart. So I appreciate you bringing that up. I know Ms. Foreman is next, and then you're on Bray, and then Ms. Tatum.
Okay, um, just first of all, Ms. Bray, I understand, I've been in that position where you're transitioning from being a committee member to a liaison. It's different, it's tick, it's tricky. But a liaison is a communicate, it's only communication between the board and the committee. So when we talk about something, okay, for example, what Ms. Messenger said about the board did not direct quarterly, you should take that back to the committee at the next meeting. And when, when they have something to say, you know, for example, when they do talk about the charter amendment, you bring it back to us, what, what their input is. I mean, they can contact us individually, but that's, that's your role, you know, is bringing information, your courier, okay?
Right.
All right. The other, as far as, I don't want to debate, debate it now, but one of my concerns about this vote is that a, a, a union president may be able to influence the report to skew information that could mislead the public and in turn affect subsequent votes. And we, something we need to keep in mind is in 2024, this, if, this would be one less thing for the public to use to argue against the renewal. So I just want to remove all barriers that we possibly can, and this is certainly one. So, you know, and, but we'll be, I'm sure we'll be discussing it in April at a meeting in there, so.
Um, Ms. Bray.
Okay. To Ms. Messenger, I'm going to read the charter, page two, administrative. Says a committee shall meet at least quarterly for, quarterly and more frequently if needed, if the need arises. A quorum shall be the majority of the member plus one. The committee will report to the school board at least quarterly. The chair of that committee brought that up. That's after the meeting was, at the end, there was a lot of discussion about this quarterly type meeting. And my comment and kind of not direction, but suggestion was to not wait until the end of the year to do the report, to look at the data on a quarterly basis. So at the end of the year, they're not rushing to compile because the chair of the committee brought up, oh, we only have thirty days or sixty days to get this report together. And one of the volunteers offered to start pulling the data together. So maybe you're misunderstanding, my comment was, directive was to, why don't you start looking at the data quarterly instead of waiting till the end of the year? So that was basically the suggestion. So then they have that data on a rolling basis, and at the end of the year, it's just plugging in the last quarter. I, I, I can see you shaking your head in discontent, but that was brought up by the chair of the committee. We're supposed to be looking at this, we're supposed to give a report quarterly. And that was the recommendation, okay? Look at the history. I mean, we're looking at putting this report together for the twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty-two school year. That, that's done. They should be able to pull first, second, and third quarter, or third quarter, yeah, and get this report together and present. I think it would be good for the committee to come before us and say, we've looked at quarter one, quarter two, quarter three, and, and give us, oh, we're watching it, we're looking at the data. And as far as we can see, can they say definitively, that was another thing that was brought up during the meeting? And I didn't, I was not involved with the discussion. I was sitting back and listening. And when they said the quarterly, that's what I said. I would say, you guys should start looking at stuff quarterly, that way you're not rushed. So that was the direction or comment that I made. Uh, if it's skewed any other way, it's, it's not the intent. The intent was get ahead of the curve and get the data and not lag behind. And this way, it's not so difficult to start pressuring and getting the data from staff all at once. Because I think we could do this on a quarterly basis. I don't see why this committee, and again, this is, how many years this committee's been in existence? I mean, the first year was really a struggle. You know how that went, the first year of the committee trying to get the data from one system to another. Second year, it was even a little more, it was a better. And then you have staff changes, who you're going to get the data from. So if they're doing this as they go, it's not such a mad rush. And that was a suggestion that I made, that I think that you're right, you should be looking at this stuff on a quarterly basis. Input from the committee, okay, I can see where you come from. Input from the committee. But when you're getting input from people out in the public, not necessarily email or a phone call, but when you're somewhere and somebody makes that comment, to your point, Ms. Foreman, do you want that to be the one thing that says this isn't going to get passed for those who support it? Or do you want it to be the one thing that says, okay, the board actually saw that that might happen? You know, we need the money, we're going to pass it, whatever you want to, either side of the fence that you're on. I don't want that to be that barrier. And optically, it just, if you're getting the money, you shouldn't, you can be advisory, but I don't think you should have that vote or voice. And Ms. Barber's has provided a lot of historical data with her organization, Ms. Howell has as well. So I would never diminish their voice, ever, ever. But as far as optics to the public, it looks bad. So, yeah, I'll, I'll postpone this vote and let the, get, take this to the committee and say, what are your feelings? I'll take it back to the entire board, and I'll share their feedback.
Ms. Tatum?
I have a question. I appreciate your comments, by the way, Ms. Bray, that was enlightening. On the other change under the administrative paragraph where it says, "Any recommendations to the school board shall be approved by a supermajority, sixty-seven percent of the voting members of the total committee membership." I'm curious to know why we haven't made it just a, a, a supermajority of a quorum. Because if you make it a supermajority of the total number of members, then you could basically have people that, for whatever reason, they don't want a recommendation to go forward, they could just not show up and block that vote continually. It's just an unusual parliamentary procedure as opposed to a supermajority of a quorum rather than a supermajority of the total. You could just have five people say, I don't want that to go forward, and so we're just not showing up. Or, I, I don't, and I don't know who made these revisions. I don't recall how that particular point came up. So I'd just like to have a little discussion on it if we could, real quick, since we're going to take this back to the committee.
I can.
Go ahead, please.
I can clarify that.
Okay.
So, yeah, I made the changes after the workshop.
Okay.
Uh, on that point, Mr. Tatum, the, I interpreted the existing language to require the total membership to, to reach that supermajority, not, not just the members of a quorum.
Okay.
So I just didn't change it from what it already was. So it.
Oh, it was already.
Yeah, I interpreted it to already require the total membership, which, as you know, is harder to reach.
Right.
Especially if people aren't attending on a regular basis. So that, since that wasn't discussed at our workshop, I, I didn't make that change. So the only change was to make it consistent with removing the voting power of the, of the, of the union members.
Okay.
Right.
Because it's in green, it says, the, what, the words in green are voting members of the lined out red, financial oversight. Green, total appears to be a word that's added. It's, if, I just wanted to have a quick parliamentary discussion on that just because it will, it could allow people, a certain amount of people to just block a recommendation. I'll throw that out there.
Right.
Go ahead. It's, it's why I'm having the conversation, I think it's smarter about it.
I just wanted to give historical context of why it was done that way.
Sure, that's, yeah.
So in the past, there were members that were trying to bring things to the board that maybe weren't representative of the entire committee. And that happened on a couple occasions, if I remember. And I look at Pat Barber for that one. Yeah. And that was put in to kind of stop that behavior because it wasn't necessarily representative of what the whole commu, the whole committee wanted. But that had passed, and then it had come before us, and then we'd have to debate it, but it wasn't necessarily representative of what that committee really wanted.
I understand.
Yeah.
It's just different than, like, if, if we had a quorum up here and we were able to vote on something, we'd vote on it. And it's just unusual language. We can talk, we'll, we'll. It's just unusual language, we can talk, we'll, we'll, I'd be interested to hear what the committee has to say on that, but I appreciate the background since you've been here. I appreciate that, thank you.
Um, I don't see anybody, well, you did have another comment?
Yes, I wanted.
And then I'd like to, I want to make sure we go back to voting on the movement. Postponing it.
Agreed, and I'm going to make this very short and sweet. Um, a report to the board is different than their annual report.
I know.
And. When you said that you directed them to do that. It sounded as if what you directed them to do, and even you kind of just said it now, you suggested it. That they start compiling all their data and present that quarterly, that's not what a quarterly report means to the board. For instance, when the audit committee reports to us, like you've seen, they come up and they say, hey, we met. And we talked about this audit, or we talked about that audit, and that's usually what it is. Oh, we had this issue, or we had that issue. It's never, and here's my PowerPoint presentation of all this data that did the, but, like, I don't, they don't need to do that much work every single quarter. And I don't want them to feel as if that's what we're asking them to do, because when we put that language in, we did not say, that's our expectation. What we said was, we want it like what the audit committee does, which is simply come before us and say. And, and I, I mean, as you saw Dr. Gusa do and Barbara Vetter has done. We met on this, we talked about that. We think you should consider this, and that's about it. And, and it's never a long thing, it shouldn't be something that takes them a long time to co- to complete. I, I know the, the yearly one is, but I don't want them to do that every single quarter, because that's not my expectation. My expectation is, hey, come before us and say, how's it going? Tell us what you need. Um, what happened at your last meeting? That is what. A school board report should look like, not some formal presentation that happens at the end of the year. And I just wanted to make that really clear, that there is a differentiation, at least in my mind, between those two things. And that's it, so I'm ready to vote. And if you want me to call the question, I will.
I'm, I'm ready to call the question, because.
Don't call the question unless you mean it, because you have to get four people.
We've diverted off to what we were originally doing. And now we're discussing how this charter works and, and what changes make. And I, I think the original, original topic is now not even on the board of discussion anymore, what we're talking about. So, um, I'd like for us to go ahead and vote for the motion that Ms. Foreman put down there to vote, or to postpone, excuse me, the charter revisions. Um, do, and no date certain on that, but at least give that to the committee so they can review it.
So we're voting to postpone.
Approving them, yep, until they, they get it.
Until they have a chance to look at it and provide feedback back to us.
And I'll take this to the committee.
And what, and what format would that come through, through prob, for three?
I would, I would, I would just say just to the liaison, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, the passage is in unanimously, thank you very much. And it's a great discussion, and I think that it, it's a lot bigger than what I think this topic was, and that's why it, it made me workshop later on again, you know? Um, second new business, approval of the revised schedule of the school board regular meetings. Uh, this was, this was my, um, I brought this up because. Um. My ask is that we change, not the dates, the dates are going to stay the same. But we moved the meetings from evening to morning on February 28th and March 28th. Um, both of those be moved to 10 a.m. Um, and no other reason than. I'm a father and my son's got his senior games, and so I'd like to not miss. Games of my son, so, um, that's pretty much the only reason why I'm asking. Um, I'm doing the, the. P A for lacrosse at M A T, and so, um, just, that's the only reason why I'm asking. So there's no other reason other than just to move it in the morning. Um, and I hope that, that. We can get that approved, so that's all that is, no other explanation.
So we're changing, I'm sorry, don't.
Yeah, you can ask, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so we're changing. Um, the 28th to a a.m.
The 28th of February, instead of a five o'clock to, to 10.
Right, and at a.m.
And then in March, we don't have a 10 a.m. because of spring break. So that March, the only March meeting we have, which is on the 28th, will be at 10 a.m.
Okay, the only thing that I would question that, and it's nothing to anybody, it really isn't. That's a long span. For no P M. meeting for, I mean, spring break might be the time that teachers would attend. Or, or parents or whatever. That would be my only thing, it's like a really long span before we have a P M. meeting, all the way from our January. Uh, one to, all the way to April. So that's like two months of no P M.
Sure.
That would be my only feedback is. Spring break, a P M. meeting, I think would have been good, because that doesn't, you know, keep.
Well, the, we're not changing spring break, so that week of spring break, there was no meetings at all, there was not even a meeting.
Right.
There's no one here.
There's no one here because our, our staff is off of spring break, so.
Oh, I see.
I, I see what your point, yes, you are correct, it is going to go from January 24th as a P M. until April 25th, you are absolutely correct. But March, we never had a meeting during, scheduled at all during spring break.
Right.
I want to say spring break's what, 12th?
12th through the.
Through the 15th or something?
Yeah, yeah.
So we never had one scheduled in March during that week, so I'm, we're not replacing or exchanging.
Right.
It's just, it's just the time. So, so that, the, Mar, it would have never happened in spring break, anyway.
Right, I, I, yeah, I get that.
That is very true.
I didn't hear.
And we're discussing. I guess, I guess maybe she's asking me what my motion, but, what it was, I guess, I don't know. I guess we do have to get a motion before we discuss.
I'm trying.
Okay.
I move, I move that we move the February 28th and March 28th start times to 10 a.m.
One second.
And now we can discuss.
Okay.
So yeah, going back to what you were saying.
Yeah.
There is no on, on.
There's no, I know there's no meeting during spring break. But this would, like I said, this is the only meeting that would be a, a P M. meeting. And, you know. We've published this, and I don't know if a lot of people's given feedback about this. I haven't gotten any emails on this being an issue. But I don't mind you supporting your kids in school, I, I appreciate that.
Mary.
Matter of fact, I might go to the game.
I'm, I'm in agreement with Ms. Spray on this, that to go from January to April without an evening meeting is a long time. The, uh, March meeting is, or, I'm sorry, the next meeting will be after the workshop at Palmasola. And we may have Palmasola vote that night. Those people who, who cannot attend during the day will more than likely want to attend that meeting. Now, the, doesn't mean you're tied with a ball and chain, Mr. Chair, that's, this is the reason why we vote for a vice chair. The vice chair is supposed to, you know. To facilitate, to, to run the meeting. And are, do you feel like you're up to it?
Are you going to, I, I'm asking, the reason that we're moving the 28th to an a.m. is because of a sporting event for you, am I correct? Or is this just?
Personal reason, yeah, I'm not, I would not miss a meeting that we're voting on, I mean, let's be honest. That, I, I would choose obviously my duty here, if we're, if we're, if that is where, we don't even know where that's going. So I'm not going to miss that being here at a meeting on something that important. So I mean, so it wouldn't even be a que, I mean, it wouldn't even be a question.
Are you changing your, uh?
Oh, no, no, I still want the morning meetings.
Okay, but, okay, I'm okay with that, but I'm, I'm more. Um. I would not have anything on a Palmasola. On that meeting.
We don't even have an agenda, we don't even have a decision, we don't have anything on.
Right, I, I know, but I'm just saying, I just think that we need to be conscious of what we put on what agenda. And on that specific meeting, I wouldn't put a lot of the.
Well, excuse me, my understanding of, of vice chair sitting in for the chair is that the chair would still work to set the agenda.
Okay.
And you are just running the meeting, so you're not setting the chair, setting it. And I certainly would disagree with postponing the vote on Palmasola, it is so fraught with.
Yeah.
A lot of emotion, a lot of anxiety, and I hope Friday we can reach a consensus and have it on the next agenda, so I, you know. Um. If, if it's not on the agenda, I will bring it as an amendment to the, to the agenda at that meeting, but, um.
To the March 28th meeting?
Mm-hmm, yeah, I want it on there. Uh, no, the February meeting.
Right, the 28th meeting on February.
So, um, so, Mr. Chair, you know, um.
It's okay, I'm not taking any personal, it's okay. You can, we can all, if, do we have any other comments? Mr. Tatum, are you, no? Go ahead, yeah.
Is that here, Ms. Foreman, you, you would like to have it on the March, on the February 28th agenda, the, the Palmasola?
Well, hold on, hold on, I'm not, so we're getting into, we're getting the weeds, I don't ca, the, that agen, the agenda. For Palmasola, et cetera, is not even, was not even part of my thought, so. Yeah, so we kind of got.
The reason I'm asking is that it's relevant to my thought process through, through all of us, that's why I'm asking. And I was just curious why. Why two weeks later, we couldn't, is, is there a March meeting, is that what we're talking, is there, is there?
March 28th.
That's the only meeting in March because the other one is during spring break?
Spring break.
That's what I'm trying to think through, I hadn't looked that far, I had to see, I'm always assuming there's two meetings every month, but in March, there's only the one because of spring break.
Right.
Okay, so then we'd have to wait till the March meeting to make a decision on that, if we didn't do it on the 28th, is that? Yes.
Unless we have a special meeting.
And that was my thought too, is if it's really that important, but.
We don't even know where it's going, I mean, we haven't even discussed Palmasola as a group.
I know, I know.
So we don't even know where it's going, we could come to a complete consensus, I just, I, but I understand, it's all good, I, I, I'm not. I don't want to, if, if we don't approve it, we don't approve it, and I'll adjust and move on.
Okay.
Well, like I said, you don't have to be here.
I can, all right, uh, can I make a motion to modify? This to keeping the March 28th meeting to a P M. And accept the February 24th modification for the a.m. The 28th, I'm sorry.
Is that your motion to that?
My motion would be to accept the 28th, to move that to the day. And to keep the March meeting to the P M., pardon me?
It should be just the opposite.
Right.
We want the Palmasola people to be able to be here February 28th in the evening.
Okay, you're saying, all right. I guess I misunderstood what you were saying, so we want to keep the 28th in the evening. Because we're anticipating that to be a dynamic meeting.
And even if it's, even if we're not voting on it that evening, um, the public need, we need to hear from them.
Exactly, I agree.
So.
Okay, just the opposite of what I, okay.
We, we, daytime meetings don't cut it for, for a lot of people, so.
Okay.
So if that's your motion.
My amendment would be to keep the February meeting to the P M. and modify then the March to the a.m.
Then you got to get a second, I'd imagine.
I have to get a second for a modification to that agenda. That'll be, I guess.
No, I'm, I'm of the opinion that, you know, we have a, we have a vice chair for a reason.
I'm, I'm agreeing with you, Ms. Foreman, I'm saying that.
Both of those meetings.
Both of those should be P M. meetings, you're saying? Oh, I see, I see what you're saying now.
I'm saying instead of having, you know, the chair can't be here, so we're going to reschedule this meeting. That's not policy of the board.
I see what you're saying.
So we didn't get a second for hers?
No.
So we go back to the, we go back to the original, um, which we got obviously a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion? Ms. Messenger, I saw your, yes, sorry.
Yeah, um, just a couple of things, um, one, we have daytime meetings to encourage parents to come. That's actually one of the reasons that we moved some of them to daytime, I don't, I think you were on the board when we had that conversation and made the decision. It is so that if there's a parent that has children in school, it's easier for them to come. Because their children are in school and they don't have to sit through a long meeting at dinnertime with their seven-year-old. Um, waiting for us to get to that item. And they can have their kid in school and come and actually go, oh, I can actually listen to this, instead of my seven-year-old talking about. Whatever they're going to talk about today. So there's, there's a purpose to the daytime meetings, and it is to actually benefit those parents. Now, I do understand parents work and not all of them can come, that's why we have some in the evening as well. Putting an item like that either in the morning or in the afternoon, you're going to get different people, that was the whole point of us having our meetings the way that we are and the way. We tailor the agendas so that we get as many people as possible to come to the things that we think they want them to come to. But that type of item. No matter which agenda it comes on, it's going to garner attention. I don't even know what's going to be on the agenda in regards to that, we really may not put anything on the agenda, I. We don't know what we're even, I, I don't even know what we're going to talk about yet. And that's the God's honest truth, when I, when people contact me, I'm like, we haven't talked about this, I don't know how the board feels about any of it, the board could come up with anything. I don't know until we sit down and talk about it. So to say, well, I want this meeting then because we're going to have this item, we don't know that. We, we really don't know that, I mean, at least I don't know that. I have no idea what will come out of that conversation on Friday. It could be anything. And so to cha, not change the jet, not change the time purely because of that, I think. Would be a mistake. I think if there was that concern, if you felt as if we need to put this on an agenda at night, we do have a meeting in April. It would take months for us to really come together with whatever it is that we decide. If we say we, we, we want to go this avenue, or this avenue, or this route, or this route, it will then take time to develop whatever that is. It will take months for it to actually come before us. The only thing that would come from a m- meeting two weeks later at night would be something ceremonial. Well, we're going to do it this way, because we talked about it a week and a half ago. Things could change over those months of, of working through whatever it is that we talk about on Friday. I, I don't think that is a, personally, a reason to keep it the way it is. Um, that's just my two cents on it, I would much prefer, I hear the chair saying, I will be here if I have to be here. I know you're saying, well, he doesn't have to be here. I hear that, but he's saying he will be here, he will be here and he will miss out on these different things. And if we can work with him on that, I don't see what the harm is in doing that. Especially since this one item, we can't wait, it probably will take time for it to get to us after we have a discussion anyway. Um, so if I need to call the question and you vote, I will, but.
I would like to respond.
She has one more thing.
Okay. Uh, first, that's not the only reason, you know, um, the, the. When we attended the SAC meeting at Palmasola, there was, emotions were high. Much, much anxiety about what's going to happen with that school. Not only among the parents, but also among community members and, uh, teachers, people who work there. They, a lot of them cannot, they, and you have seen, we haven't had that many people here talking to the board. Um, the person who gave comments for someone else who couldn't be here, we need to. Um. Be receptive to people who want to address the board. And for people who cannot come during the day to have to wait until April is, um, especially on this, this particular item is. Um. It's not right, um, we, uh. I know I had anxiety always about what's going on with my kids for the next school year. And if we're talking about for the school attendance at the school, you know, will. It, it just, there's so many people that are on pins and needles and want a decision on this. Um, so I think it's important that we have our doors open at the February meeting. Now, as far as the chairman asking him not to attend, uh, a, a. Now, as far as the chairman asking him not to attend, uh, a sporting event, I, I get that. You don't have to preside over the meeting, you can attend via Zoom. You know, and weigh in when you, when you want.
Teams.
Yeah, teams. So, um, you know, I'm not asking you to put us, the board before your family. I, I get that, you know, but, um, I want to see an evening meeting that day.
Any other commentary?
Sorry, she, she and I were both in speech and debate, you know. Um, just one more final thing.
I was a champion, I'm just saying, state champion.
Um, one final thing, if the board were to make some sort of decision on Friday, that would warrant some sort of meeting where we'd vote prior to this April evening meeting, we could at any time call a special meeting. The chair only needs twenty, forty-eight hours, something like that, in order to call a special meeting. So at any time, we could do that. We could notify that the school can call out and say, hey, we're gonna, it could happen sooner than that meeting if that was what the board so chose to do. And would be only for that one item. We could, we could manage that in a lot of different ways if there were something that were to come out on Friday that we needed to act on immediately and resolve that. So I don't want this decision to be about that item, I guess, is what I'm trying to say, is like,
Yeah, no, I.
It really shouldn't be about this item because there are a lot of different ways to manage it, and we don't even know what the item will be because we haven't discussed it. So I have no idea, and we can manage it a lot of different ways, that's all I'm saying.
Well, I'm just saying, no, this was not the only item, but to be able to have board comment, or public comment well before April on this or any other item, so.
Did you have your, Ms. Freddie, did you click?
Yep.
Or is that old? Okay, I didn't know if that was new or old. Sorry.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I was at that meeting. I was in the back, and trust me, there's a lot of anxiety about this issue. And on my calendar, I have trust and transparency. And that's, you know, this, this workshop already has been published about what we're gonna be talking about. And to, you know, I'm with Ms. Foreman, I think that the public needs to know far before April because of the anxiety they feel. And I get it, when you're elected to positions, you have to weigh out the family, and I've always said it, faith, family, and flag, you have to weigh out what's more critical. Family is more critical than this. And, but the families that are, um, this involves and impacts, this is more critical to them. So, I don't know, it, I'm in the air of, of what we should do there. I just think that's an awful long time to go without a P M meeting where we don't have public involvement for those who work and or, and I get your point about kids being in school, Ms. Messenger, and we have parents, but those same parents might be working a job too. So we have to take all of that into consideration, um, you know, is, there's never a perfect time. And as far as a special meeting, when we were going through all of the things with Adam, Adam Parish, I had asked that, is this, would this warrant a, an emergency meeting? And, or a shade meeting or whatever to give us more detail other than what we were getting and through emails? To me, I thought that would have been enough stuff to call a special meeting to discuss how we move forward with this. Thankfully, we've had staff here that's excellent in the field. So a, a lot of things were resolved, but I think that would have probably, you know, you gotta decide what would warrant a special meeting. I think that would have, to me, but that's just me.
Yep.
So it's up to, you know, I'm only one vote, as Ms. Messenger has generously pointed out.
I don't see anybody else, would this, Mr. Chairman, did you have?
Oh, I'll take that off, I'm sorry.
Um, this garnered way more discussion than I thought. So, uh, Ms. Messenger, Ms. Means, do you have it up there for us to vote? To approve the revised schedule, uh, and moving the twenty eighth meeting in February, twenty eighth, March to the A M? And it passes three, two. Thank you, uh, very much. Moving forward to, um, workshop items requests. We got our workshops full for the next several, uh, months here. Obviously, Friday is, um, uh, some of our policy procedures, Palmasola and S S C. And then we've got February twenty fourth, we've got some, uh, of the, the arts, village update, strategic plan update. Uh, and then beginning of March, impact fee study. Thankfully, finally, it's about here. F S B A, um, will really control a lot of this stuff moving forward. So if you have anything, um, audit committee procedures as well on March third, March thirty first, we got F S B A, we got transportation we wanted to discuss. Um, elementary reading supports that we want to discuss. F S B A takes up a lot of April, um, and then we get into budgeting in May. Um, but if you do have a, a workshop request, please bring that up to Ms. Saunders, Superintendent Saunders, when you're in your board briefing, and we'll get it put on the calendar. Um, no more public comment.
Can we not bring, is this not a good place to bring it up, to ask for, for workshop subjects? Cause it, workshop item request, but is it better to just send the email to her and?
Yeah, and then she was gonna put it on, then we'll just fit it in the calendar.
Okay, the, the only reason I'm asking is, uh, Friday is something to do with construction and things like that.
Yeah.
There was a.
Oh, you, oh, you asked about this Friday's workshop, sure, yeah.
Yes. So I've had, I've fielded a couple of phone calls from some constituents who are concerned about a piece of property that we own out east that's near the racetrack out there, and that we have a piece of property, we're gonna build a school on it, and there's some concerns about the noise. And so it would be interesting to start, at least start a conversation about that piece of property. If that idea, if that noise problem has been considered, and I'm trying to pr- bring it up in the appropriate venue if we're already doing a workshop, but I don't know how much time the staff might need to talk about that, or.
I would say that's probably not Friday. I don't know when that's warranted, bec- I don't know how long, I don't know how long that property is going to be developed. It may be a year, so you can.
Couple years out, so I, I don't know that we can fit it in this Friday, but we'll certainly put it on the list, um, to, to bring before the whole board to discuss.
I think maybe even budgeting, uh, in the budgeting portion, when we talk about capital.
Right.
You know, our, our five-year capital plan, that's obviously, that piece is gonna be in the capital plan for five years. So we're gonna want to discuss, obviously, hey, where are we building there?
It's not just, you know, two citizens in general, it's people that this property is part of their business and what they do, and they're concerned about it, and there's some opposing viewpoints, and so it would be good to start looking at that issue and, and talking about it here in the near future, that's all.
Yeah.
Yeah, great, thanks.
Um, legal updates, Mr. Dye.
Uh, super brief, uh, just noting that the board now is getting a monthly, uh, status report on the matters that are being handled, the outside litigation by the Jackson firm. So hopefully you, you like that, we'll keep doing that. If you have any questions, then you, it can trigger, you know, that you can get a answer. Real quick, uh, county use of the debris storage, uh, on Post Road has come to a successful conclusion. So just so you know that, and it was before the time limit. And, uh, we'll try to avoid that in the future. And, uh, just so you know, uh, we're working on a new interlocal agreement with the county for, uh, continued use by the county of the King Middle School property that's on the corner of, next to King by Ninth Avenue Northwest. So there already, there already is one, there's an old one. That area is already used by the public, um, when it's not being used as a school. So it's, uh, it's an update to that agreement on a more modern form. And, uh, I think the county's, uh, my understanding, they've actually got some money set aside to, to do some improvements to that property. So just to, just to make you aware of that.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Wagner, operations.
Very good, thank you. Uh, Chairman Choak, members of the board, superintendent, uh, just have four items today. Uh, number one, just a little trivia, I appreciate you approving the job growth grant, but it's interesting, uh, why this is important. So in two thousand eighteen, they rolled that grant out. There are hundreds of applications back in two thousand eighteen, and, uh, the governor at the time, Governor Scott, picked, uh, Manatee County as the very first recipient of that grant. So the governor flew in and he had a ribbon cutting, uh, at Manatee Technical College for our advanced manufacturing program. Uh, and since then, there's been over six hundred applications, uh, for this grant money, and they've awarded ninety-five. So there's forty-nine technical colleges in the state, and only ten received, only ten grants were given to the technical colleges. And we believe now we're the last, uh, recipient of the grant. So we were the first and the last, uh, recipient of the job growth grant over the last, uh, six years. So it's a big deal for us to get this money for diesel. Uh, number two, project digitize update. Uh, as you know, we're scanning all the student records and all the, um, employee records. We have forty schools completed with ten remaining. So our goal is to finish out the ten remaining schools, uh, for student records by April of this year. And for our, uh, staff, we have a hundred and thirty-seven boxes have been scanned, and we're down to just thirty boxes remaining. So by the end of May, our goal is to have, uh, all the staff records scanned as well. So a shout out to I T for making that happen, and the schools, and everyone else who's pitching into making sure we're scanning everything and getting all the records stored digitally. Uh, number three, transportation job fair is tomorrow. So it's at the, uh, we're trying it at Matske, and it's gonna be from ten to one. And then the following day, which will be Thursday, uh, will be a job fair for operations. So it'll be H V A C technicians, uh, roofers, uh, plumbers, electricians, I T, and the paraprofessionals will be on Thursday. So we have two job fairs this week. And number four, uh, the superintendent had mentioned the Vex competition. If you do have time today, it should end between right around three thirty today. Uh, we would love for you to see it. So, uh, Manatee County, this is the fourth year we've done the Vex competitions here. Uh, when we first started, we were the largest district competition in the United States, uh, to happen here in Manatee County. We had it at Manatee Technical College, and we loaded that thing full of all the elementary students with their Vex robotics, and it has just taken off, like she has said, I mean, it has taken off. Right now, today, there's over seven hundred, you can imagine, seven hundred students, uh, at the convention center. There's over a hundred and fifty judges, and they all have fluorescent, uh, shirts, shirts when you're walking around there. Uh, the students compete, uh, head to head with robots, uh, and they have to, uh, this co- it changes every year, the competition. This year, they have to pick up little pucks, uh, and they have to take the pucks and have a device that picks them up and shoots them in a goal, kind of like hockey, it's called snapshot. And so it's so exciting to see the students build their robots and then talk about them. They have to go through an interview process, and why did you do it this way, and why did you do it that way, and let's see how they do. And they're all working together over there. And if someone's missing a cable or their battery runs out, you have another school right next to them that's willing to, to loan them, uh, the equipment needed so they can compete. So, uh, a shout out to everybody who's out there, um, from safety and security, from I T to a- all the volunteers, to curriculum instruction. I mean, everybody has chipped in there. This morning, there was a line of buses, uh, charter buses to get into the, the convention center. You can't believe the excitement when you go over there. So if you can make it today, we'd love to see you, and, uh, we appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Superintendent.
Yes, I just want to remind everyone that, uh, President's Day is on February twentieth, and the district will be closed and observant. So, so don't come into school on, on that Monday. For those that may not, uh, have seen, we had our Excellence in Education awards last week. And, uh, I, I do realize that some of our board members couldn't be there because you were at a training, uh, for finance with F S B A. Or you, of course, would have been there, uh, but Ms. Messenger and Ms. Foreman were there, and it was a lovely event. We moved it from M T C to Parish Community High School. And, um, we had two winners, of course. Ms. Kelly Smith-Williams was our educator of the we, uh, year from Lakewood Ranch High. And Ms. Brianna Hall was our support employee of the year from Lincoln Memorial Middle School. Uh, we would not be able to have this event without the support of our foundation, Mary Glass and the Education Foundation, as well of our, as our sponsors. It really was lovely, and showcasing the talent displayed of our student performers was just amazing. I, I believe, uh, Ms. Foreman has already bought tickets to, uh, the Frozen, uh, performance that is gonna be held in the future. So, uh, it certainly was wonderful. Uh, also, you've been invited to our grand ribbon cutting for the new building of Sugg Middle School. That is on February twenty-third at five thirty P M. So mark your calendars if you haven't been out to that location. Uh, that school originally, uh, was built in seventy-four, I believe. Looks vastly different today. Uh, we also, that same evening, same time, we are having our ninth annual Manatee County E S E Agency Fair. So students, uh, with disabilities, uh, that may need resources, parents that may need resources, we bring in lots of agencies and support for one location so that parents are able to be there for one-stop shop, and that will be at M T C as well. So I also wanted to thank, uh, the grandchildren or great-grandchildren of Louise R. Johnson that came for, uh, our, their presentation today. What an outstanding performance they made. And, uh, I thank Principal Asada, uh, for coming and supporting, uh, our school board meeting today. So with that, that's our updates.
Thank you very much. Board comments, I have down here, no particular order, Ms. Foreman, Ms. Messenger, Mr. Tatum, Ms. Bray, and myself. So, Ms. Foreman, you were up first.
Okay, thanks. Uh, one of the items that, uh, and I'll, I, I mentioned it to the superintendent, but, um, I met with, um, Serge from Silent, uh, about cybersecurity on January twenty-sixth. And he, we have not had a report from them since August. So we really need to, um, to have that report, which will involve a shade meeting. So, uh, he has asked for it to either be in March or May, so, um, you know, just put that out there, and if we can get that scheduled. Um, I did attend the February first Sorin Four, um, and, uh, was treated with a tour by Stephen Ross Camp, who is extremely instrumental in, um, making that happen. And if you haven't had a chance, I, that's my first time since COVID that I've gone to that, and it's mushroomed. It's just really an awesome, uh, fun, fun event for our families and students. We had the Braden River ribbon cutting ceremony, uh, that was nice. And the same night, the, uh, M T C winter graduation, and I, uh, and Ms. Bray did the speech at both of those, did an excellent job. Attended the Minnesota Honor Choir Concert, where our, all of our schools, the middle schools and the high schools, came together with schools from Sarasota and, um, did a concert that was just really, really beautiful. Um, enjoyed that very much. And, um, Excellence in Education Awards, we did that, and Ms. Messenger and I were twins. You know, so we wore the same, basically the same clothes. It was, it was pretty funny. Yeah, and then, um, uh, wanted to mention the Greater Florida, uh, Central Florida Greater Co- Consortium, uh, Coalition. They had a meeting, uh, February thirteenth, I guess it was yesterday. And I did, uh, it, it's virtual, and I did listen in on it, and it was actually a great meeting. They, uh, Danielle Thomas from, uh, the F S B A, uh, did a presentation on, uh, H B one, which is something that we all really need to follow and input on. But, um, one of the things that I wanted to point out is they stated in the, that their bylaws say that any member that misses twice in a row, we're out. So, um, you know, just wanted to pass that along since I'm not the representative, and I don't know if we want to add an alternate, you know, to, um.
Who is the representative?
I am, and I sent them li- uh. I am, and I sent him li- a, a message to the lady, I had a conflicting.
Perfect, but you're getting the invites?
Yes, I'm getting.
Okay, perfect.
We're all getting invites.
Cause I was not getting the, I wasn't for a little while when I first came on, so, yeah, I just wanna make sure.
No, but it was, it was a good meeting, and, um, so I'm glad, I'm glad I attended, and I will probably attend whenever possible, but just wanted to pass that along.
Maybe a good policy would be if I know I can't attend, to get in touch with you, and that way.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Somebody have.
Yeah.
That's a good one.
That would be good, okay. All right, I'll be the unofficial, uh, alternate. And, um, yeah, the, um. No, I'm, I'm gonna pass on that. So, um. Yep, um, that's all I have to say, thank you.
Ms. Messenger.
Whatever it is, I don't want you to pass on it, you can have my time, I just wanna know now. Um, yes, our, our matching outfits just exemplified how we spend too much time together. Um, that's what I took from that one. Uh, I'm glad you went to Sorin Four, my, my kids love Sorin Four, so I love that you went. It's a, it's a, it's a great, um, event. Um, I agree, uh, the speech at the ribbon cutting was very good, so I appreciate you doing that for us. Um. Also, sorry, Mr. Tatum, I just wanted to warn you that Mrs. Foreman, that's how she became the treasurer of the consortium, right? She started showing up, and then they.
Not that one, not this one.
Oh, I know, I know, but you just, that's how, that's how the other one happened, I'm just saying, just.
Show up and all of a sudden bam.
They appoint you. I could go and nominate him.
Let's go volunteer.
Been there, done that.
Uh, but other than that, um, this was a good meeting, we had a lot of, uh, good discussion, and so, thank you very much, that was it.
Mr. Tatum.
Yes, so I wanted to discuss a real quick comment on Palmasola, and that is that during Mrs. Ms. Messenger's comment, she was saying a lot of things, and I was actually paying attention. And one point in there, you said, if we make a decision on the seventeenth of February, and, and like you were saying, we have to be careful with our words, we, we might have a consensus that we might be talking about, but just as the public listening, no decisions will be made on the seventeenth of December, or February, about Palmasola. So just, just to clear that up, you were just talking extemporaneously. Yep, and then along those lines of transparency, too, I've had a few constituents talk to me about the new superintendent process and recent events that have happened in the county. And just to let people know that there is no inside track for anybody, there are no preferred candidates. It's completely open, the field is wide open for everybody who wants to apply. So I just wanted to address that real quickly, and let people know that that's what's going on, and there's nothing going on behind the scenes there, an effort of transparency. And then, actually, in, in light of the, uh, the History Month that we're celebrating this month, one of my favorite movies is a movie called The Man Without a Face, and it's the story of a man who's a teacher, and then, early in his life, and he gets out of that profession, but he comes back to it as a tutor for a young man. And at one point in the movie, he says, uh, I'm a teacher by trade, but I do something else to, to earn my money, you know? And so I just wanted to do a quick, uh, presentation on our History Month that we're talking about here, and it'll take just a minute or two, if Miss Means, if you could bring that up. It's just kind of an interesting point of, of history that I wanted to go through here real quick, and this maybe gets me back into the teacher mode just for five minutes or so every so often, fills that need in my heart, so to speak. So, uh, over on the left here was, is a gentleman called, uh, James Armistead. And he was actually a slave, uh, back in the Revolutionary War period there. You can see the days of, the years of his life there. And a very interesting story about, about him that I wanted to bring up, and I call this colorful partnerships in American history, is on the right, you see the Marquis de Lafayette. James Armistead was a slave, his master allowed him to go and fight for the Revolutionary Army, and then he became, uh, he got onto the staff of the Marquis de Lafayette. And so, uh, next slide, please, if you would. The Marquis de Lafayette, if we know him, was a French gentleman who came, or French noble who came in, and helped us out during the American Revolutionary War. And so he, uh, James Armistead ended up being on the Marquis de Lafayette staff, and then he went to be an actual double agent with the British during, uh, the Revolutionary War. And so he actually went and was, uh, being like a, a servant for some of the British officers, and he was getting information, and one of the critical pieces of information that he, that he brought back to us, and if you see on, on the slide there. Um, so that summer, right in the middle of the slide, Washington wrote to Lafayette requesting information on Cornwallis, who was one of the British generals. And on July thirty-first, seventeen eighty-one, James Armistead submitted a detailed report on British locations and Cornwallis's strategy, and that was key to us winning the Battle at Yorktown, which was the final battle of the Revolutionary War, which put essentially an end to the armed conflict that we were having in our revolution. So James Armistead was absolutely essential in the intelligence that he provided to us winning that battle at Yorktown and actually winning the Revolutionary War. And then the last slide in the presentation, if you would click it. So then the, uh, Virginia Legislature passed a law that, after the war, that said any slave that had fought in the war and carried arms was, uh, got his manumission, and the word manumission means to be freed. But apparently, because James Armistead did not carry a weapon, he was a spy, the law didn't apply to him. And so he kept pushing, and his, his master actually pushed for his manumission, for his freedom. Lafayette actually wrote a personal letter, and that's what you see in the, uh, in the, in the image there, in the testimony under there, to help out with his manumission. He was eventually granted his freedom, uh, here in, in the state of Virginia there, after the Revolutionary War, and he went on to buy a farm and do some great things. And then his, the date of his, his death is not actually certain, it's either eighteen thirty or eighteen thirty-two. But I just think that, I was doing research for an academic degree that I'm pursuing, and it's these interesting, what I call colorful partnerships in American history. This is a way that we can know more about what's happened within the black history and the black community of our country, and to show that a lot of us really have worked together over the years, no matter what our skin color is, to make sure that, as we talked about in our proclamation, you know, we're, we're working towards making sure that people have equality of opportunity here in the United States of America. So thank you for indulging me in, in that, but I, I just was trying to bring this to our attention. It's interesting, and there, I'll do one more of these at the second meeting in February, and another one of these partnerships, which a lot of people don't know about, but which show us that there really truly is a, a great history of everybody working together to make sure that the original ideas of the Constitution, all men created equal, endowed by the Creator with certain inalienable rights, is coming to fruition. Thanks for your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have to say.
Ms. Bray.
Okay. First, the seventeenth workshop, I, I'm out of town, I will be at that meeting via Teams. Um, there's no way I could drive, do the meeting, and get to the conference. So I will be attending that via Teams. Um, it was an honor to be able to stand at both sites, Braden River Middle and at Manatee Ga- Graduation, and represent this board as a whole. Because what we do ultimately filters down, uh, not every decision, but a lot. So it was a, a badge of honor for me to do that. Um, there was comments made on social media, oh, there's Ms. Bray, anywhere, there's a camera. I have been to many schools, uh, since November. I don't take a picture, I don't post it, I don't need to have that notoriety. It's more about what you do, uh, behind the scenes that makes a difference a lot of times, not in front of a camera. Um, and the Johnson family, a lot of history there. It takes, sometimes it takes one person and a family to make a difference in a generation moving forward. And I commend her and the courage it took of what she did for herself that ultimately led to the next generation to doing great, to the next generation, to the school that I go by all the time that's, uh, near me. So that part of history changed not only her and her generation, but the generations after that, to leading up to a school, what an honor that is to have. And I just wanted to say, I appreciate the family coming today and sharing their testimony about their great-great-grandmother. Um, I think it was great, great, and it's, I can see where they come from, that it just takes sometimes one person to make that change in a family. You may come from a family of ten or twelve, but that one member will step out and say, I want a different life, and that's what that, and that's what she did. So I just wanted to say that about the, the Black History Proclamation, and, yeah. Those are good things. Other than that, I think it was a good meeting, there's lively debate sometimes, but ultimately, it comes down to us as members to represent our community and to give advice and/or direction. If there's questions, I'm gonna give the best knowledge I know, and if there's something I can offer to assist a committee or anybody in a community, I'm gonna do that. I don't think it necessarily has to be a unilateral agreement, because we all have different beliefs. And, uh, whatever I can do to direct somebody to have that information other than go to the website, I'm gonna try to do that. So, Happy Valentine's Day, go. Give everybody hugs. Where's the chocolate?
Ready? Um, I just wanna say first, uh, just to, to last week, and some of the events that are happening with Parish Community High School, I wanna say thank you to the staff for dealing with that. Uh, and, and I thought it, it could have been in really a better way. Yeah, you learn from things, you learn from different, um, you know, events from happening, but I really thought you all were put into a really tough spot. Um, and Mr. D'Amico, uh, you know, I, I think that, I want the public to understand that, that, not even talking about Mr. D'Amico's, um, past and, and what he's done, and his accomplishments and things like that, but that we have a safety, um, and security leader in our district, and it's not on somebody else, and he is that person, and, and he's able to, to go out and train the kids and train the, the staff, um, periodically. For, for us to have that in our district, number one, is fantastic. And then number two, obviously, his background in law enforcement, and, and then, then our own Sheriff's Department, um, Police Department, um, I know we got help from Hillsborough last week as well. Just thank you very much for everybody responding, and, and it's unfortunate that, um, you gotta respond, even if it's, and there's nothing found, you gotta do it. Because there's the one time you don't, there is gonna be something. And so, um, I, I, I just wanna say that I know that was a lot, it was, it was every single day, I wanna say. And, and it was a lot from that Thursday and then into the next week. But I really wanna thank the staff for, for, uh, what you all did. And, and, you know, so you can't please everybody in the way you do it, that's, it's never gonna be the issue, but I thought you all did a fa- fantastic job, um, and I, and I think that, uh, it will learn from it with, with some of the things, but overall, it could have been better, and, and I really, really appreciate that. Um, as far as, as Black History Month goes, I, the, the Johnsons, I mean, that was an unbelievable, for, for those three, uh, great-grandchildren, for them to come up, um, the Goffs, uh, you know, that would've been really tough for fourth grade, come up and speak and do a presentation in front of adults, in front of a full room full of people, that was very, very cool. And, and I'd say, for me personally, you know, look, there's, there is a lot of educators in this community, um, uh, black educators in this community that we could have picked. The Harveys of the world, um, meet two, two for me personally, Reggie Bellamy and, and, um, and Ms. Bundridge at Manatee High School, they both are extremely influential to, to me. So, uh, we could have picked anybody, but what a better family to pick than the Johnsons, that, that was a phenomenal presentation. Um, I thought we had a great meeting, I appreciate it. Um, other than that, that's it. Happy Valentine's Day, sorry to bring chocolate for everybody, um, and we are adjourned.